All right, I will call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, May 10, 2023, to all persons interested in or affected by the actions of zoning board of appeals you hereby notified pursuant to Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all amendments thereto that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held on March, all right, sorry, on Wednesday, May 10, 2023, at the time indicated. First, we will call to order with an introduction of board members. Mark Hanson.
Present.
Denise Johnson.
Present.
Herb Boden Sieg.
Present.
Paul Pennard.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
And I am Jacob Dewey. Notice of recording. Please note this meeting is recorded, broadcast on Channel 18. In accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is taping this meeting. Please make their presence known. Seeing none, first order of business is minutes. We have minutes to approve from April 12, 2023, and April 26, 2023. Someone want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Any second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm in favor, but I wasn't present at the April 26th.
Okay, noted. So the minutes are approved. First order is old business. An appeal number 2023-006. Denise M. Anderson, trustee of the Anderson 77 Parker Road Nominee Trust, has petitioned for two variances from Section 240-13E Resident CRC District Bulk Regulations and 240-36 Residence Protection Overlay District, RPOD. Petitioner seeks two variances to unmerge Lot 1, 40,075 square feet from Lot 2, a developed lot containing 43,915 square feet pursuant to the plan prepared by Sullivan Engineering Consulting. The subject property is located at 77 Parker Road, Ossil, Mass. As shown on Assessor's Map, 117 is parcel 135. It's located in the Resident CRC zoning district. This was continued from March 22, 2023, April 12, 2023, and April 26, 2023. We have the petitioner here.
No, there was an email.
Oh, I did not see that.
This is the continuance.
Attorney Schultz is not coming. Okay. Do we have a date we're continuing to?
To May 24.
So we need a time extension, probably?
7:00 PM. Excuse me?
Do we need a time extension then?
Probably. We'll look into that.
Okay.
Okay, I won't be able to attend that meeting. So if we have a quorum, that's fine, but...
Okay.
We should be okay. All right, does someone want to make a motion to continue that?
Motion to continue. Appeal number 2023-006 to May 24, 7:00 PM.
Second. Second, Paul.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. So that one is continued. So moving to new business. In appeal number 2023-009, Russell and Carol Wilkins, 1043 Shoot Flying Hill Road, have applied for an appeal of the administrative official's decision in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 7 and Section 15. The petitioners seek to overturn the dial of request for enforcement from the building division dated March 3, 2023. In the denial of request for enforcement, the local inspector stated that under 240-128 and 240-8A4 agricultural uses under five acres are permitted with some exceptions and after review, an inspection found that no zoning violations exist. The subject property is located at 1055 Shoot Flying Hill Road, Centerville, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map, 191, as parcel 027. It's located in the Residence D1, RD1, and Residence CRC zoning district. Do we have someone from the... Yep, come on up. All right, if you can just introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is George.
Oh, just a microphone. There's a button right on the microphone you said to push, right in the center. Did it turn green? Light turn green?
It did.
All right, go ahead. Yep.
I don't hear him.
Oh, hold on. Sorry, they can't hear you. Maybe try the other microphone. I don't know.
It's just that I think he's too far away. You might have to sit, George, I think, just to make it... Well, it's up to you.
Sit or maybe go to the podium.
I can do that. That's fine. It's on now?
I would go to the podium if you prefer to stand.
He just can't hear you on the TV. It's word of study word that they can't hear you.
So is it better if I...
Probably, so it's closer to your face.
Again, my name is George Asak. I'm an attorney with an office at 300 Barnstable Road in Hyannis. My clients, Russell and Carol Wilkins of 1045 Shoot Flying Hill Road, Centerville, are to my left. This is their appeal of the determination of the building department regarding the use at 1055 Shoot Flying Hill Road. I do have, if I may pass out to the board, several things. May I approach?
I believe this should be one of each member.
And that summarizes our position with regard to not only the laws, the Mass. General laws, the zoning bylaws of the town of Barnstable, but also the factual situation on what's happening. So I think initially, the best way to start is for me to address the determination that the request for enforcement is denied. I'm suggesting to the board that we disagree with the determination that this use is not in violation of the zoning ordinances of the town. There are a number of reasons why. We've dealt with that in some detail in the handout that I gave to you, so I don't want to bore the board with a lot of detail about the ordinances and the statutes. I'm sure the board is more familiar with the ordinances than I am. However, the determination that this is an agricultural use, and an agricultural use under five acres, and therefore exempt from the requirements that it comply with a residential zoning district, I suggest is not appropriate. I suggest Mass. General laws addresses agricultural uses, and the issue of whether a use is over five acres or under five acres, I think, is key here. It's important to understand that there's a distinction between things such as having a seasonal farm stand, horticultural type uses that are referred to in the ordinance on parcels under five acres versus an actual agricultural farm type use, which the statutes say is in excess of five acres. The reason that's important factually is we're talking about a situation here, and you're going to hear from my clients about what they've been living with. But we're talking about a situation where in the backyard of their next door neighbor, in an enclosure of about 100 feet by 50 feet, there are currently 25 goats. There are 25 goats. There's a very significant manure pile. There are stables, outbuildings, feeding buildings, all within very close proximity to my client's backyard. We've given the board, I think you should have them prior to the hearing, pictures, and I'm going to want to address them. But let me just say briefly with regard to the laws. I think perhaps the single most important issue here, everyone knows what's permitted in a residential zone. Everyone knows that there are certain exempt uses, such as seasonal garden stands. I suggest, though, that if you look at 240, Section 10 of the ordinances, and I'm going to read, this is my repeating what the ordinance says, so I hope it's word for word. 240-10, Section A, "Any use which is injurious, noxious, or offensive by reason of emission of odor, fumes, dust, smoke, vibration, noise, lighting, or other cause." Those are uses that are prohibited in every district. If, when you hear from my clients and hear what's been going on there, you're going to hear things such as, summer before last, there were four goats on the property, relatively small goats. My clients wanting to be good neighbors didn't have an issue with it. It was a bit of a nuisance, but they chose to be tolerant and to be good neighbors. There began to be a foul odor from the goats being on the premises. There began to be noise. There were some structures that were being built. Now, mind you, this is in very close proximity to where my clients sit out in the backyard, where they have cookouts with their family, where they have friends over to entertain. And there are 23 goats as of today, within 10 to 15 feet of where they would be sitting. There is a manure pile from 23 goats. That's maybe a foot or two from the lot line. So initially, when there were a few goats on the property, while it was a bit of a nuisance, being good neighbors, it was tolerable. Presently, the odor is so foul that my clients don't go out in the backyard during the summer. The smell is so bad that they can't tolerate it. They've had friends over and they had to leave. They can't have a cookout. They can't, they have a swimming pool. These are folks who've worked hard their whole lives to have a beautiful home in the town of Centerville, to have a beautiful backyard, if you look at those pictures, and they can't use it. My clients have found rats in their pool since these goats have been on the property. There's feed stored in some of those buildings. There are, as I said, a manure pile. There is feces and urine all throughout the property. It would be easy to say that this is the property owner's fault. I think the fault is in having the goats there. I think the fact that they're there is uncontrollable because there's going to be manure. There's going to be odor. There are going to be varmin that are drawn to the feed that's stored on the property. Mosquitoes, and just a totally intolerable situation for my clients. If you look at those pictures, if I may just take a few moments of the board's time, if you look at picture number one, that's a picture of my client's backyard, the year, summer before last. That's what the property used to be. Swimming pool, a hammock, tables to sit out. And if you look to the left of that photograph, there's a line of arborvitae. That's going to be important as we go through the pictures, but if you take a look at that, that's what, that's what the yard looked like. Next picture, from another angle, shows the yard after the goats have done some of their damage. And by damage, what I mean is the goats climb up on the trees, and these are my client's trees, and they chew on the bark. They eat away the evergreen. And as you go through the progression of pictures, you'll see the difference between that lush backyard that used to be there and what's there now. So when my clients do go to sit out in their backyard, the protection that they have because the goats have eaten the trees is gone. That adds to the fact that the noise comes through, the odor comes through, the sight is there. This is a residential neighborhood. 23 goats. If you look at the next picture, which is number five, those are some of the outbuildings, stables, I would suggest. And there's an ordinance regarding stables and the requirement that those be licensed. Again, I just refer you to the handout that you received. Picture number six, that's one angle of the goats roaming around on the property, taken from my client's property, maybe 10, 12 feet away from where the goats are at that point. Number seven is pretty much the same thing. Number eight, and it's sort of hard to see, but number eight is a picture of a very large male goat up on one of the trees, leaning on my client's fence, chewing on a tree. You can see that the bark is gone. You can see again that the green is eating off the If you look at picture number nine, that was taken at an angle that shows what the entire rear row of arborvitae look like now, after the goats ate them. Number 10 is very similar to that. 11 shows the bark being eaten. Number 12 shows a fence. If you look to the left, between the two trees, you can see the manure pile. My client's property is right where that fence ends. So like I said, foot, two feet away from the property I suggest to the board that the neighbors have not done what they're required to do. They've not properly licensed the outbuildings that they've erected. They've not properly fenced the area. The fence that separates my client's property from theirs is my client's pool fence. So there was nothing erected by the homeowner to give any protection. The only protection is my client's fence, which is at least a foot inside his own property line. So I do think it's important to understand that the progression from having a couple of goats in the backyard and it being a nice quaint little thing. As a matter of fact, Carol Wilkins, when he first, when they first had three or four goats, when the gentleman would leave, he would speak with her and she would go over and feed the goats. As they, as the number grew, she became afraid to go over there because goats are goats, and she would get butted and pushed around, et cetera, et cetera. This is not a situation where we have a neighborhood feud. This is not a situation where my clients have a bone to pick with their next door neighbor. They tried very hard to be good neighbors, but picture yourselves spending your entire lives to put together a nice oasis to live in and not being able to use it. I understand that someone from the Board of Health has been out there, and on a couple of occasions, and on one occasion said that they didn't, she didn't smell anything. On another occasion said that that's when the goats are rutting and that's what they smell like. On any given day, especially in the summer, and it depends on the wind, it depends on the humidity, you can go there and you don't smell it. On another day, when, and this is more often than not, when the conditions are right, it's absolutely unlivable. I would like the board to give my clients an opportunity to address you as to what they have been living with. Oh, I'm sorry. And one other thing. We do have, when notices were sent out to a butters, my client got delivered to him from a lady he doesn't know, a letter regarding her take on what these goats have done to impact her property. May I submit that?
Yes, it's public. Yeah.
Sure.
Would you like Mr. Wilkins to...
Yeah, Mr. Wilkins, you just introduce yourself for the record.
Yeah, do you want me to do it from here or from the podium?
Probably the podium's best. I don't know what's going with the microphones over there.
Thank you. My name is Russell Wilkins. I am one of the two owners of the property located at 1045 Shoot Flying Hill Road. The other owner, obviously, is my wife Carol, and she will have something to say also, if the board would permit her. I'm not going to try to go back down through the litany of bylaws that I think are being violated, or the statutes that I think are being violated by this operation that Mr. Hallett is conducting over there. Really, what I want to tell you is what effect it has had on my family and myself. And this goes back to 2020, 21, when, as it was spoken, the goats first appeared. There were two, and then there were four, and they were small, and they were cute, and it was a novelty. And my wife inquired, and as, as Mr. Asak said, she would go over and assist in feeding them when Mr. Hallett was away. That just became too much because two became four, became six, became eight, and the goats became from small to big, to bigger. And they were pushing her around when she went over. In fact, one day, she asked, one time, she asked me to go over, and I went with her, and it was quite a job, so she had to stop doing it. So I'm telling you that because we're, this isn't a gripe session that we have with our neighbor. We tried to tolerate what was going on. And in the summer of 2021, the smell became apparent. However, it was intermittent. It wasn't every day, and it wasn't as pungent as it became or has become. And so we put up with that. And through the summer of 2021, we didn't go to the, to the health department. We didn't go to the building department. My wife would call Mr. Hallett and say, hey, you know, we're having parties outside, and, you know, the smell is getting whatever. And he would tell her, he would try to take care of it, alleviate the smell. So that went on for 2021, and we just kind of stuck with it. When we got to 2000, at the end of 2021, in the summertime, I found two dead rats in our swimming pool. I never had a problem. 22 years plus having a swimming pool in that location, never had rats, never. Occasionally, a few most would wind up in the pool, but never rats. So we all of a sudden had the rats, and the smell was becoming more and more. So in the summer, in August, I went to the health department and complained, and the health inspector came out and inspected it and said, well, I can't smell it. And under the bylaws, he has a right to have these goats, so I find no violation. But she did tell me that the smell that I was smelling, that I was objecting to, was because the goats were rutting, and it was a normal, natural smell of the goats. Well, I'm not going to articulate exactly how the goats get that smell, or where that smell comes from, except to say, the goats urinate on themselves, and that's where the smell comes from. And they do it, the male goats do it, to attract the females. You know, if there's questions about that, it's all over the internet. You can go look it up. But that's the, that's where the smell comes from. But she detected the odor and still found it was not a violation, despite what the bylaws say about odors, offensive odors. So we let that go, and then in the wintertime, the smell still appeared. And so I went to the building inspector to complain that from, as a enforcement officer of the bylaws, that that was his job. And Mr. O'Neill, the inspector, one of the building inspectors, came out to the property, and he went out to the back of the property and immediately said, I can smell it. He took pictures. He saw the manure, he saw the manure pile. He saw the arborvitae that were chum off the backside of it. And he said, well, let me go back and talk to the commissioners. Two weeks later, he called me and said, well, we, we find that there's no, there's no violation of the Biden law. He can have goats. Well, at the time, he had 15 goats out there. That's what we counted. So he told me he was going to deliver a denial letter for my request for enforcement. And he came out to the house, and I said, he gave me the denial letter. I read it, denied my request for enforcement. And I said, well, you know, Mr. O'Neill, I'd like to have you go back outside and take a look again. So we walked out the back of my house, through the deck, and here he said, yeah, I can smell it, still smell it. And I said, can you imagine what it would smell like in August? And he just shook his head, yeah. We went out back, and he took more pictures of the manure pile, of the destruction of the arborvitae. He was explaining to him that the fence that is there is a pool fence, and by law, it's a four-foot pool fence, that the goats stand on their hind legs and put their, their front legs up on the, on the fence, and pull the trees down and eat them. So now, as shown in one of those pictures, the, the barrier that we built 20 years ago, planted those trees, doesn't work. And they're on my property, our property, and he doesn't have a fence. So the goats actually are on my property when they're eating the arborvitae. He came back inside. I handed him some research that was done about the bylaws. I handed him some research that was done about the statutes, the Massachusetts statutes. And he asked me to give him back the letter that he had given me denying it, said, and based on what I've seen again, and I smell, and what the, the research you've done, I want to take this up again with my bosses, the commissioners, is what he called them. A few weeks later, he called me and said that the decision was made that there was no violation. And then we got the letter of denial. But that's sort of the, that's the, the routine that has taken place, or what brings us here. But let me tell you what's really happened to the family, that we have a beautiful backyard. My wife has spent hours and hours and hours at a hobby she loves, planting flowers and trees and shrubbery and whatnot. We have extended family who comes to our house, who used to come to our house, to sit around the pool, to have drinks. The kids would swim. We would have cookouts with friends. My wife would entertain some women friends of hers, three, four times a week, at luncheons out in our backyard. She would entertain them playing Mahjong out in our backyard. This was in the summer of 2022. She couldn't do it. This was before the summer of 2022. In the summer of 2022, those occurrences stopped. We had barbecues that we cooked outside and had to take inside to eat because of the smell, the odor. She had parties, luncheons with the women friends that started outside, came inside, or never started outside because of the odor, or others that were canceled because of the odor. So that's what we have lived with. The, the experiences that we've had at this point now have just, have taken away our ability to use our backyard, to have the enjoyment of our backyard, which we've worked hard to get. It's in a residential district, and it doesn't happen every day. So you can go out today, and you can't smell it. You could plan to have a cookout on Saturday and not be able to have it. You could plan to have a luncheon on a Wednesday afternoon and not be able to do it. And that's what we live with. The result is really, again, that we don't, we don't have the use of our backyard because of these goats in a residential district. It's not as though it was a five acre piece of property. And it is that, it's the little things. You know, when the inspector went out the first time, the health inspector, she recommended to Mr. Hallett that he erect a fence to keep the male goats away from our property line. He erected a fence, and for the next year, the male goats were right on our property line. The female goats were put away. It's the male goats that smell. You know, that's unfortunate, but that's, that's what we have. When the, when the health inspector went out this last time, she went out a week ago. She came to my property after a complaint by my wife to the health board, Board of Health, and she came out and she met me, and we walked the backyard, and she said, I can't smell it. I said, I can't smell it either. She said, I can't, I can't find a fault if I can't smell it. But she said, I'm going to go next door and make some suggestions. So she went next door, apparently. She told us she went next door, and she made some suggestions. The next, the next day, two days later, one of the, two of the structures were moved away from our... away from our, our lot line, but he was out there with a leaf blower, blowing goat droppings from his property, trying to put them in a pile, I'm sure that's the answer, but they, he was blowing them up next to our fence, which is a chain link fence, onto our property. So I went out there, and this goat droppings, you know, a foot or two, two beyond the fence on our property. Now, the, that's, that's what we're living with. That's what's happening here. I don't expect, from looking at the pictures, that you're going to be able to see and really realize what we are living with in this residential area. That is, he is using his house as a residence. The area that he's using for these goats is approximately 100, because the lot is 100 foot wide. His house sits on his lot behind our house. So it's about 50 feet, maybe 60 feet, from the real lot line to where he has his goats. And 100 foot wide. That's it. With a manure pile that's right up in the, as you're looking at the property, the top right-hand corner, which is a northwest corner. We, Mr. Azak just handed me a, a, a illustration or a, a diagram of the property. May I approach?
Yeah.
That is, not to scale, but it shows you the location of what we're talking about in terms of. It shows the location of what we're talking about in terms of the pool, in terms of our backyard. And as you can see, the property line is that solid white-red line, the solid line down through the middle of the paper, from top to bottom. And the dotted line next to it, off to the right, is the location of the fence. It is a foot to a foot and a half inside our property line, and was designed that way when we put the pool in, so that we weren't on the property line, we were on our property. The trees are inside that, and you can see that the trees are inside that fence on our property side, and the fence is 15 feet, plus minus, from the pool. At the top, you can see, there's a circle marked manure pile. And I will submit that I think he knows where the boundary line is, because if you look at the very top, you'll see 24 plus or minus. Well, he built a fence 24 feet long, down to our rear fence line, and then came into our fence one foot. So he built, built fence down, came in one foot to our, to our fence. So you can see, the Xs mark the structures that actually exist on the property today. I don't expect that this diagram or the pictures are going to tell the whole story. So I'm going to, I would invite each of you to come out and look, to see what we live with in this residential district. And if it means that the hearing has to be continued till another date, I would invite to do that. But that's what we live with. And that's, you know, we have been denied now our useful, our peaceful enjoyment of our property. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins.
Okay. My wife would like to say.
Mr. Wilkins, you do want to speak? Go ahead. Yes?
Thank you for listening to our plight. I just have a few last-minute comment, last comments. First, we support agriculture, but it's important, and I wrote them out for myself because I'm a little nervous, but, we support agriculture, but it's important that the town of Barnstable have good, safe regulations to ensure impacts are minimized on surrounding residential uses, which are incompatible with the keeping of numbers of animals. And as was said, it started out with four goats that I vaguely heard in the background because the, the brush was all there between our two houses at the time, when it first, when Zach first started getting the goats as pets. And I went over and saw them, and I, I think just two or three times offered to help him, I fed the goats when they were away, which was fine, but it's become a herd now. In the town of Barnstable, if the town of Barnstable does not have zoning regulations to protect property owners from nuisance impacts, such as odor, noise, and destruction to adjacent property, we strongly recommend this board institute or initiate better regulations for agriculture, for agriculture and the keeping of animals kept in proximity to residential property lines, such as requirements for fencing and setbacks for pasturing, feeding stations and sheds, and preferably numbers based on the amount of property that is, that is there to take, the property is taking in the waste of these animals. They're not feed, that waste is not going into a septic system, it's going into the ground. And goats, I learned today from the health inspector, who again came out, goats tend to urinate in the same spots over and over again, and Zach has been filling them with sand and things like that. And she's been, according to what she's saying to me, she's been helping Zach learn how to use lime and other sand and other ways of dealing with the goats, which I'm very grateful for. So I would just plead with you to hear what we have to say and try and provide a remedy for us. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins.
Just very briefly in closing, I, I would suggest to the board that, I understand if the board doesn't feel as though they want to accept my, our interpretation of Mass General laws and the bylaws. If it's helpful to the board to address this with town council, we would welcome it because we're that certain about our position. Also, the invitation from Mr. Wilkins to come to the property, to see what it looks like, to actually experience what's been going on is there, and if, if the board determines it would be appropriate to suspend, to do either or both of those things, we would be absolutely in favor of it. Thank you.
Just, well, I guess, does anyone have any questions for the applicant or the petitioner? I guess I have just a question, did, what was the Board of Health's position? So they just stayed out of it? They didn't make any sort of determination on enforcement from their side?
Actually, they, they did. I think that Mr. Wilkins can address it, but the Board of Health had said, the lady from the Board of Health said what Mr. Wilkins said, that there were only certain things that they can do, but they did come back, ask him to move the buildings, to do certain things on the property. I think Mr. Wilkins can better articulate what those were, but there was no finding that they were in violation.
So there's no discussion of a licensing requirement?
No.
We addressed it, but they did not.
There was no discussion about licensing requirement, no discussion about licensing the stables. Stable is, is a place for shelter and feed. No, no discussion about that. The last time she came out, she told my wife that she could smell it and that it created a violation, and that he was, she was working with Mr. Hallett to ameliorate that problem. Right? And, and that's when she told us, because Carol asked her, well, how many goats did you see? She saw 20, she counted 23. Up until then, when Mr. O'Neill was out there, he and I counted 15. So as this whole thing has, has come to fruition, as this, as this appeal has had to take place, he's gone from 20, from 15 to 23. It's just, to answer your question, no.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to that, I would point out to the board that not only is there a licensing requirement for those outbuilding stables, but they also have to meet all of the zoning requirements, setback, et cetera, et cetera. None of them did.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think 248B says 25 feet, whether that's our bulk regulations in that district or not.
And if you get into other stabilizing things, they say that any collection of manure has to be 50 feet from any side boundaries that, in, on which a house is located, to a neighboring lot. 50 feet, well, then in fact, you couldn't have a manure pile on a 100-foot lot. You just couldn't do it.
Thus the five acre.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I think we should probably hear from the building, unless anyone has any questions for the applicant. Do you have any questions, anyone, or the petitioner?
I'm just curious, there, there are no laws.
Just microphone.
I could help you with that.
I, I'm curious that there aren't any laws about the number of animals, because I know dog kennels have a very specific number of dogs they're allowed to have on the premise. Is it because they're agricultural animals that there isn't any limitation?
We disagree with that. We don't, we don't agree that, well, maybe with regard to numbers, but the keeping and raising of them, we're suggesting is not allowed under the zoning ordinances, is not under, allowed under Mass General laws. Every reference to agricultural uses on less than five acres is horticultural type uses and not animals.
Not animals.
Except there are exceptions for horses, so long as they're not kept for profit. But no mention of other livestock or other domesticated animals.
But, but you're right, Mrs. Johnson. There is bylaw that you can only have six dogs on a lot.
Right.
Without a kennel license. But apparently, we can have 23 goats without a license.
My understanding from the health inspector is that the, we have a house down.
Just a little closer to the microphone.
I'm sorry. My understanding from talking to her about, because I asked that too, is that we have a house down the street from us that stables two horses, and they're licensed, and their manure outtake is somehow monitored through the licensing. And, and there's a, a town law about roosters, that you can't have roosters. But the goat, everything else is by omission, and the goats, if they're not outlawed directly, my understanding from the health department is that there's no violation. And goats aren't mentioned.
I have a question here. The, the relief you seek is what?
Cease and desaster.
Enforcement that there's a violation.
Well, what's the violate? I mean, no goats at all?
That's what we'd be asking.
Okay.
The, the odor is, is not an occasional odor. The, the goats go into heat every 21 days, I think we just read, every 21 days. So they, they're emitting this odor regularly, and they create it themselves, again, by urinating on themselves. So it's, it's, you can't say two goats and, at this point.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go.
Yeah, I have a real problem. I, I don't see the violation, the way that the zoning is written. This just might not be the place to hear this, but there must be some relief that you can get from, from the town.
If I may, with all due respect, I think if you look at Section 240-10, use, use is prohibited in all districts. That's a cover-all section that says, regardless of what we allow in any use in any district, regardless of how we restrict those things, these uses are prohibited in all districts. And it talks about uses which are injurious, noxious, offensive by reason of emission of odor, fumes, dust, smoke, vibration, noise, lighting, or other cause. Those causes exist here. The noise, the smell, the vermin that it's drawing by keeping the feed and keeping the manure piles, et cetera, et cetera. And when we're asked, are we asking, what are we asking? The reason we're not saying contain it, make it smaller, have a fewer number, is because that problem isn't going to go away.
Yeah, just to have 24 goats, I just can't even imagine a reason for that. It's more than a hobby at that point. Are they, do they hire the goats out for, because I know people, I have neighbors who...
We're going to hear, I think we're going to hear from them at some point, so.
Well, at one point, before I went to the building inspector, I called Mr. Hallett and say, as a courtesy call, hey, you know, the goats are getting too much, I'm going to go to the building department and complain. Just as a heads up. He said to me, look, we have a right to have these goats, and they're part of two new businesses that I have. I said, two, what are the two new businesses? Because I'm going to lease them out, and my girlfriend is going to take the smaller goats to children's parties. So that's, those are the two new businesses. His intent was, now I don't know whether he's doing it or whether he'll admit to doing it, but that was his intent. But I will tell you that with the 15 goats there, I can go out on any given day and five, 23 has just arrived, okay? There were 15. I could go out on any day and find eight or 10 out there, and five or six are gone, and they're gone for three or four days, and then they come back. Where, where are they going? Five or six days? You know, this is what's, this is what's happening. But also, the, the, the bylaws do prohibit it. If you look at the justification used by the building department in denying our request for enforcement, they go to a particular part of the definition for, in 240, 128, for the definition of goats, of, of agriculture. And the first A paragraph says, referring to a particular part of the zoning bylaws that is for five acres or more, shall include the definition of agriculture as used in the Massachusetts statutes. And the Massachusetts statutes, I can read it to you because I have it here, says that farming in all of its branches of cultivation, tilling the soil, dairy production, cultivation, growing, harvesting, and agricultural, aquaculture, floriculture, horticulture, commodities, and the growing and harvest of forest products, and the raising of livestock, including horses. And then it goes on to say, or, and, the keeping and raising of horses, or the keeping and raising of poultry, swine, cattle, and other domesticated animals for food purposes. So if he's going to raise and keep them, they got to be for food purposes. And I can tell you that I don't believe he's slaughtering these animals to eat. Okay? So the other part of the definition, for clarification, under 128, chapter 240, 128 of the bylaws, deals with the definition as it relates to five acres or less. And reading it in conjunction with that which is clarifying, is clear that it refers to having a garden, growing vegetables, growing flowers, selling them out on the lot, because it talks about a seasonal sign, it talks about a seasonal table or a little bench or place to sell them from. You know, so with respect, I would say that the bylaws do cover that, they're just not being followed.
Okay. I think next we should probably hear from Commissioner Florence, as I see he's here, and he doesn't take these things lightly, so I'm sure he has some insight of how he got to his determination here that he can hopefully share with us.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, thank you for your time this evening, and especially want to thank you personally for your time in volunteering to do this work. I know that, I know you're away from your families, and, and I know what it's like, so I appreciate it. I'm going to be speaking in plural tonight because I wasn't... I'm going to be speaking in plural tonight, because I wasn't the one, the local inspector, Kevin O'Neill, is the one who did the investigation for us, and we came up with the determinations together. At risk of sounding redundant, we're here tonight, as you know, to appeal an administrative official's decision. Specifically, we're here to determine if the zoning officer executed his duties responsibly, effectively, and judiciously, whether we did our job right. What we're not here for is to decide if having goats is okay, the number of goats is okay, whether chewing arborvitae is okay, or whether the neighbor's yard looks nice or smells nice for that matter. While issues involved in this case bring strong opinions from both sides of the, of the matter, we have to look at the facts involving the administrative official's decisions and actions as he reviewed the case for zoning purposes. Those statements aren't me telling you guys what to do and how to do your job, it's just you're a very competent board, and I know that you know what you're doing. I just bring those as, out as facts in support of our review of the, of the, of the scenario and the actions that were involved in our request. So we're asked to look at a property with a fairly large number of goats, that is stipulated. While the petitioner never asked us to enforce 240, Section 10, which they made as part of this appeal, the entirety of the ordinance, as well as its intent, must and did figure into our thoughts and reasonings as we came to our conclusion and made our determination. As you heard, 240-10 reads, "Any use which is injurious, noxious, or offensive by reason of emission, odor, fumes, dust, smoke, vibration, noise, lighting, or other cause is prohibited." That section of the ordinance is found under the general provisions, Article 2, as is the same section that I cited in denying the applicant, the request for enforcement. The section I, I cited specifically says that the uses herein are exempt. That's very important terminology. I'll go ahead and read what that says. General provisions provides under 248, Section A4, that agriculture, horticulture, viticulture, aquaculture, or floriculture on a parcel of land, five acres of less shall be permitted. The language in this section, as you, you see, as Attorney Azak said, is key, and I'll make, I'll explain that in a moment. The distinction of five acres of less is significant in that it's unusual in a zoning ordinance, particularly in a community that has not declared itself as a right, a right-to-farm community, which Barnstable has not done that. Or have we? Looking at Section 8. You're probably aware, as board members, that Mass General Law 43, 40A, Section 3, entitled, "Subjects which may not regulate," which zoning may not regulate, provides exemption to the zoning act, which in communities are prohibited from unreasonably regulating. In other words, the legislature's saying, you can't regulate these things. And one of those things is agriculture. I won't read the whole paragraph of Section 3, I'll paraphrase the, the relevant parts for this discussion. "No ordinance shall, or by law shall, unreasonably regulate or require special permit for the use of land for the primary purpose of agriculture, aquaculture, civiculture, horticulture, floriculture, or viticulture." That sounds familiar. The drafters of this ordinance took the language right out of 40A and plugged it into our ordinance in order to exempt those five or less acre farms. The drafters of the ordinance drafted these provisions allowing land area requirements to be less than the state statute despite the exemptions of Mass General Law 40A. In other words, they fully intended to say that agriculture, even on parcels under five acres, without dollar amount restrictions, and that's another key component of Section 3 of 40A, were specifically not in violation of the ordinance, including Section 240-10. So they exempted those, those agricultural uses. And if you look at every one of our residential districts, they allow some sort of farming. A lot of them speak to horses and stabling, but every one of our residential districts allows it. What they haven't told you too much tonight is that there's a parallel tract of enforcement being taken. They are appropriately going through the Board of Health. They have enforced my request with the Board of Health, health inspectors have been out to the site and have issued orders to the property owner to correct certain things. Now, the board had, this board had asked some questions about what's been done. Well, first of all, we don't go out to a citizen's home and start wrestling to the ground the minute we see a violation. We talk to them, we try to encourage voluntary compliance with the ordinances, which is what happened here. Mary Beth from our health department went out, she issued orders to move a structure, move the structures away from the property, properly store feed in lockable containers, cover specific areas of the, of the yard with sand, and do a manure mitigation plan. So she's doing what she's supposed to do. So you can't listen to the presentation and not feel for the, for the, the folks, the Wilkins. But I would argue that the administrative official has executed his duties professionally, responsibly, reasonably. The damage to their property, the loss of peace and good order, they're not zoning violations, and they didn't cite zoning violations because they're not. They're civil matter. These are situations that should be addressed through the court system and through their attorneys, and it's not everything that, that, not everything that happens on a property is a zoning or, or town regulation. So I respectfully request that you uphold our determination this evening, and I'm being sensitive to your time. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Florence. Questions, go ahead.
A question, a question about the fence. Is, does the zoning requirement require them to have a fence?
No, sir.
The health department requirement does, I believe, the licensing requirement does.
Yeah, that's, that was my question.
But, but Commissioner Florence, so the fence would be considered a structure, which we're agreeing that 248B applies here, and so the fence would have to be 25 feet from the property line?
No. No, there's, no, landscape, landscape-type structures are not, they're specifically exempted. Stone walls, fences, flagpoles.
Fence, not a continuous fence.
It's listed in the specific exemptions under zoning.
Okay. But the, the, whatever, buildings, huts for the goats have to be 25 feet from the
No.
Property line.
No, they don't. They're under 120 square feet, they're not, they're not, they're not even subject to a building code, a building permit. But the Board of Health, I, I don't want to speak, I'm speaking strictly to zoning, I don't want to speak for the Board of Health. The Board of Health may have regulations, and I assume they do because Mary Beth required that they move some of the structures further away from the property line. For animal husbandry purposes, not for zoning.
So in, in regards to 248B, we're saying that these aren't structures? Because that says, "Any structure for agriculture, horticulture, viticulture, aquaculture, use shall conform to setbacks of zoning district or minimum 25 feet."
Yeah, the, those.
Temporary structures are structure, right?
I, I'm sorry, you're correct in your reading of 240, yeah, 240.
8B.
8B. Those are, because the town allowed agriculture under five acres, they put that series of restrictions in there, so those do apply.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, because the fence, I don't know, I mean, we're calling, we're not calling a fence a structure, a fence is.
Nowhere else in the zoning ordinance does the, does it speak to a fence being a structure.
You need a permit if it's over six feet, right?
Yeah, they just changed that, remember, Bodenziek, to seven.
Oh.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Commissioner, when, when you read that thing, I think it was, it could have been 240-10 or 8A, I'm not sure, but it said, unreasonably, there was an adjective there, unreasonably.
I was speaking in terms of our duties?
No, you were reading one of the.
240-10A, maybe?
I think it was a 10A.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the petitioner's citation. Yeah, it says, "Any use which is injurious, noxious, or offensive by reason of the emission of odor, fumes, dust, smoke, vibration, noise, lighting, or other cause is prohibited." But it's found in that same general provisions under Article 2. So, look, if, if we wanted, if we wanted to apply that to every single, every single use in the, in the ordinance, you couldn't have an automotive shop in any district. The gentleman has said, it applies in all districts. You couldn't have a welding shop, you couldn't have an auto body shop, you couldn't have a restaurant with a band, you wouldn't be able to have anything if you applied that specifically as opposed to generally. That's a general provision in the ordinance, not specific.
Anyone else have questions for Commissioner Florence?
Yeah, I don't know how to word it, there was a mention of roosters being exempt, and how are they, if there were roosters instead of goats, there would be.
Sure. I, I think they're referring, they're referring to the health department regulations as it refers to husbandry, animal husbandry, yeah.
Okay, good.
Not zoning.
That would have bugged me later.
Thank you, Commissioner Florence, for being here, appreciate your time.
I'll be here if you need me.
All right. I guess we'll open for public comment on this matter. Is there anyone here from the public to speak to this?
Good evening, thank you for your time. I'm Zachary Hallett, I'm the neighbor of the Wilkensons, and...
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, please.
Zachary Hallett.
Okay.
I'm the neighbor with the goats, I'm the goat man.
Is your, is your microphone on, Zach? I'm sorry, is your green light lit?
Yep, green light's on. Yep. So, yeah, two years ago, we brought home four goats, and before we even brought home the four goats, we'd actually borrowed a couple of goats to clear up the dog pen in the backyard. And they were from another resident from the town of Barnstable, and he let us have them over, and we fell in love with the goats and goating. So we looked into it, and we did, we bought four goats, and we kept them in the dog pen, okay? And that's how it started. And when you have boys and you have girls together, they have babies, right? And they had more, right? So we had more goats, and we've gotten ourselves up to 23. I'm not looking to keep 23 goats. I understand that's quite a bit of goats, and on top of it, it's quite a bit of money to keep the goats. And when we say the word 23, I just had six babies. They're this big. They're not enormous, they're not huge, but you have to have adults in order to have babies, and then I have a couple of juveniles that aren't ready to have goats yet and not ready to be bred. I'm fourth generation Cape Cod. I just moved down here. My great-grandfather was a farmer in Osterville, 980 Main Street, okay? Grew up, farms, all that kind of stuff. They have a huge piece of land in Osterville, okay? I took up this passion. I like the farming, okay? I get it that it doesn't suit them being next to their pool, it's not a good mix, a pool and the goats, I get it. Before I got into this, I looked into the rules and the regulations on goats, there wasn't any. I asked people around that had goats in the town, what are the rules, what are the regulations? I work for the sheriff's office, and so does my girlfriend, she lives with me at the house, okay? We have two little girls. I looked into the rules and regulations. I wasn't looking to break any rules and regulations, and I'm still not, okay? So when the health department showed up last summer, okay? Mary Beth was very nice, and she's like, yeah, the neighbors are complaining about the smell and this and that, and let me show you some things, okay? I'm new to farming, and otherwise than anything else, it takes growth, it takes making mistakes, it takes, it takes learning how to do it. I bought books. Books, books don't help when they start, when the baby starts popping out, okay? Farming, you gotta learn as you go. And the health department helped me, and I followed all their regulations and all their suggestions, because it was suggestions. And, and the, last year, she said I was in complete compliance. And I said, that's great, I want to be in compliance. Is there a regulation how many I can have, and this? No, there isn't. Okay, then I'm in compliance. I felt good, okay? And then the inspector came on the zoning. I said, okay. He came and he says, you're also in, in compliance. I said, okay, that's great. So then again, right before that guy showed up, yes, Mr. Wilkins calls me on the phone, wants to have a nice conversation about how much he doesn't like the goats, what, what am I doing with them? First off, I've made no money on them. They've never disappeared from the property, never made a single dollar. If anything, they've just bled me dry. But if it's any hobby or passion, that's what it's going to do. I'm not looking to keep that many. I'm sorry to what happened to his bushes, and if I have to replace some bushes or whatever, or build a bigger fence between us, that's fine. I didn't build a second fence next to his fence, because how many people do you see with two fences side by side? I thought it was all fine, okay? I've always tried to be within the regulations of the town. So then when Mary Beth came the third time to talk about the smell or anything else, she gave me some, some suggestions. And she said, why don't you try removing some of the, the debris, okay? And the manure. I said, no problem. So I've already, and I didn't wait, this happened last week. I said, I won't wait, I did it that day. And the day after, and the day after that, and I, I worked to keep my property nice. Yes, he complains that the manure pile is in the back corner of my property. Where would you keep a manure pile? In the back corner of your property? I'm not going to put it in the middle of my property, I wasn't trying to put it on his property, if anything, I put it the farthest away as I could. I'm trying to do that I can, what I can, and I'm working with the town and all the officials. I'm not trying to be a bad guy, and most of the goats, well, even the babies, they're already going to be rehomed, and a couple of the adults. I'm not looking to keep this many of them, I'm not a hoarder, they're costing me a lot of money. He doesn't like the goats because they're near his pool. Yes, sometimes when I clean up, I have to use the blower. It's a large area property, to go out there with a rake would take me days, every day. So yes, I group the stuff together in order to remove it. I didn't feel like I was in any violation, and the town officials have told me three times that I'm not in any violation. So I'm really not even sure why I'm here. But I know it was important to speak my side, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hallett. Go ahead, Paul.
This certainly is a very sensitive information, situation between neighbors.
Sure.
I find it puzzling that somebody has to tell you to do something because your farm is annoying the neighbors. I mean, a smell is a smell. You could smell it, they could smell it, so, okay. If I were them, I'd sue you to put a fence up and to replace all the trees that you go to. Why haven't you put a fence up?
Why haven't I put a fence up yet? As far as...
At all, they were chewing their trees. What do you need, somebody to tell you to put a fence up because you're damaging your neighbor's trees? You need somebody to tell you that?
Paul, that's not our position here. We're, we're looking just at the zoning violation, if there's a violation.
I understand, but this is very, very annoying.
That's not our, not what's before us today. Thank you, Mr. Hallett, I appreciate your comments. Anyone else have any questions regarding the current conditions? No? All right. Anyone else in the public want to speak to this? I don't, Anna, we didn't receive any comments, correct? Okay. I will make a motion to close.
Have a letter.
Oh, sorry.
May I respond briefly to what the commissioner said?
Yeah, let's just look at this, I don't know what this was. This is the one that... Okay. So this is a letter from Barbara White. It doesn't have a date on it, but she is at 126 Naughty Pine Lane, she's been there for 52 years, and, I mean, I can't really read this, but, Anna, what did it say? What does it say? Scratch. I mean, I can't read that handwriting, can you read that? No, it's not, not matter of seeing, I can't read that handwriting.
Kind of get a baby born or anything like that.
You know, in old days, we were a person, you know?
Right. Until nine months ago, they started getting strong smell. It's because of the goats, urinating. Concerned about the situation between neighbors, children in the area are in danger from the goats, recommends that the board does something about the issue.
Okay. We'll put that into the record. All right, so, yes, Attorney Azak, if you would like to respond, that's fine.
And I promise, I'll be very brief. Obviously, we've got several interpretations of Mass General laws and the bylaws. Commissioner has his, he's suggesting that 240-10 does not apply. We could debate that all evening, and it's not going to go anywhere. I would ask the board at least to consider presenting this to town council, because the interpretation that the provisions of 240-8A, Section 3... interpretation that the provisions of 2408A Section 3 are gonna be applied to 2408DA Section 4, to me, doesn't seem to make any sense. But again, I don't expect this board to accept my interpretation of how those ordinances jive together. I would suggest that perhaps Town Council could be of some assistance, could do some research with regard to that, but the suggestion that that doesn't apply and that the Commissioner has no obligation to enforce that, we strongly disagree with.
Thank you. I'm not sure how, how we could refer something to council. I don't think that's something we really can do. I mean, they were, obviously, they could amend a bylaw that could put them in violation, I assume, but they'd probably be also grandfathered in potentially. I, so I'll make a motion to close public comment on this. Any second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
So that closes public comment. Back to the board for deliberation or findings. Does anyone have any thoughts on this or want to make findings? So what's before us is upholding the building commissioner's decision that there is no violation here to enforce or overruling the building commissioner's decision to, and saying that there is something here to enforce. Strictly on a zoning perspective, again, Board of Health is a totally different situation. That's not before us.
It pains me to say that it's, it's not a zoning issue. I mean, it could be, but it falls through the cracks. I don't know how to put it, but I really wish that there was something we could do. We're not passing the buck. Or maybe that's exactly what we're doing.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
But.
Down, down, down. Where is this bush?
I just don't, I mean, I do feel it's a gap that, I mean, was the intent that the zoning, if we had to do it all over again, would we just have no regulations about raising animals in a residential neighborhood?
I.
What if somebody wants to have 20 cows in their backyard? I mean, I agree, the letter of the law, the zoning as it stands, but I wonder when it was created, if it considered the fact that this could happen.
I mean, I think it's a, it's a fine line. It was protecting the ability to raise animals and provide food and agriculture and things of that nature. I mean, it's going to the state level.
This is, this is one of the things I was thinking that, you know, in a right to farm state, you know, they do, they are very pro agriculture. You know, I've had situations even personally in selling real estate where we've had crazy things, peacocks in other properties that are bought and literally had no recourse. So I feel for the, for the petitioners, certainly the destruction of property, if we were to consider that, it seems to me more of a civil issue than a zoning issue. And also even on the interpretation on the 2408A4, I think, you know, it says that it is a permitted use and those other things, the A, B, and C, those are just essentially requirements, you know, for that use, that signs can only be, I don't have it right in front of me, but I, you know, signs can only be a certain distance, sheds can only be used for produce or farm stand sales, things like that. Those are, these are, those are things that within that use have to, have to happen. So I don't know that it particularly falls under this. It is certainly a tough situation, but with regard to zoning, I don't know that there is a violation here truly that we are able to make decision on that way to overturn.
Does someone want to make findings?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick comment. So it's hard to dismiss 24010 in this particular instance, and I understand that if we were to enforce it each and every time, but only enforcement only comes when there's an actual complaint lodged, am I correct?
Yes.
In the sense that if an automotive shop exists in a business zone district and nobody's complaining at that, there's not enforcement necessarily needed. So I don't know how you dismiss any use of which is injurious, noxious, or offensive by reason of emission of odor, noise, of other causes prohibited in all, emphasis added, zoning districts, you know, so.
But then we go back also to the exempt, the fact that it's an exempt use, exempt that this is exempt.
By the state.
By the state from our regulations.
And I, and I agree, except there is, you know, that, that language regarding five acres or less, right? I mean, we're sort of in this gray area between what is, you know, exempt and what's not, I think. It's, yeah, this is, again, it's just a terrible situation. It's a no-win situation, I mean, for, you know, I, I don't know how to rectify it, except I do feel, as Paul does, that being a neighbor is, you know, there are sort of neighborly things to do and I don't feel like that relationship has been extended both ways at this point.
Yeah, seems like a fence could go a long ways, it sounds like.
Well, again, you know, sometimes that's the truth. And we're not here to say you gotta do that, I guess, but I, I don't know. I, I have a hard time with this. I have a hard time passing the buck, I guess, or ultimately to, you know, force these folks to bring it to litigation to, you know, to, to small claims court when, you know, we are a body that can make judgments that, you know, I don't know.
I mean, I think it, it goes back to Denise's point, though, and your point, that maybe this is something that the council needs to take up to consider updating these bylaws to address this going forward. But what is before us, what Commissioner Florence has determined by what the bylaws say, that they're in compliance.
Yeah, and I, and I, again, I would tend to agree with Commissioner Florence on that fact. He, you know, it's, it's just, you know, again, as the, as attorney has, has referenced, the language is such that it's interpretable, I guess, depending on how it's spelled out. And these cases come before us often and we're stuck in this limbo period of how do we interpret these things to each particular case, right? And one attorney will argue one way and the, you know, and we, we're left here with our hands tied in what amounts to be a, you know, neighborly issue. And it's, it is painful to hear. I can't imagine what you folks are going through. I truly can't, except I don't know what we're supposed to do at this point, given the materials we have, given what the Commissioner Florence is working with himself and what we're faced with. I, I don't, there's no, you know, we're just stuck here. It's, it's, it's a really, really tricky subject and, you know, and sticky situation. I find there is evidence in this report that you've submitted that we could use personally, and I will probably vote that way myself, but I, I don't know what the rest of the board will do at this point, so.
And I know the hearing is closed, but is keeping cats really in agricultural use? And are they entitled?
Again, interpretable however, you know, you want to read it, I guess, is what we're looking at here from what you presented and what the zoning right says. So I, you know, I, it doesn't make any sense that six dogs and, and you know what I mean? We've already gone over that road. I mean, it, it doesn't make any sense that six dogs is licensed, you know, you need a license for and yet 25 goats is not. It, it makes zero sense, you know? I, I can't, you, you, you know, so, but we're not here to.
Health Department, I mean.
I know, I get it. I, I understand it. I, I, you know, but we just gotta move on.
Have the town lawyer look at this and give you some interpretations of how these bylaws interact.
So is that something you choose to do? Would you like to continue it? This is your opportunity, I think, to continue.
You can make a motion to continue.
If you folks would send it to.
If you want.
Town Council.
Well, again, I'd like the petitioner to be involved in that. I don't want to speak for them if they choose to want to make that decision.
They would continue it if the town, if the board sought it to send the issue to Town Council.
The microphone's on, right? Sorry.
We, we would agree to continue it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr., yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If, if the board would send it to Town Council to give some interpretation.
I don't think there's anything we can.
Yeah, I don't think that's a piece necessarily, but I, I mean.
That doesn't change it, I think.
No.
We still have to either yes or no.
I know. I, I, again, I'm just giving them the opportunity if they want to, because I think you're sensing where this is gonna go. You do have the opportunity to ask for, you know, if you choose, right? If we make it.
Again, it's a vote of us if we decide we want to continue it. So someone has to make a motion and we have to prove that motion to continue it. And again, I would just want there a reason that we're expecting further information either from another municipal official, if we want the head of the Health Department or someone to come in here.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to present as many options as I can, so everybody's on the same page, that's all.
Yeah, Commissioner Florence, do you have another comment or just?
I was just gonna make a point of order that the public debate was closed and that's unfair to not.
I concur.
Have the sides have the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Does anyone want to make a motion here? Aaron, if you would like to, again, it's not up to the petitioner, if you want to continue it and ask for further information or again, another building, I mean, another.
So I guess that's, I would like to make a motion to continue this. I'd prefer to hear from, you know, in written, I guess, from Board of Health and maybe get clarification. If, I need some more, I guess, clarification personally, whether or not the zoning ordinances that are written out here help to define this a little bit closer for myself.
Would it be more helpful if we knew that the Health Department, that they, you know, were, at this point, we need to know where the recommendations made and was there follow-up or were the recommendations, you know, upheld?
From the Board of Health, but we are not the Board of Health.
I know. That's what I'm saying. So if you're gonna go that route, though, health, it has to be something like that. It can't just be.
We're very specific here of what we're looking at, 240128 and 2408A4.
Right. With that, they, they are in compliance.
Yes. I mean, 24010A wasn't even publicly noticed.
Wasn't even noticed, yeah.
Okay, yep, so I'm, I'm in agreement then. I, there's no need to prolong this necessarily.
All right, so someone want to make a motion? Okay.
Not to continue it.
I'll, I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead, Paul.
I would like to make a motion on Appeal Number 2023009, that the board affirms the building commissioner's finding that the agricultural use goats in this case at the property of 1155 Shoot Flying Hill Road, Sunerville, is not in violation of Section 240128 and 240-8A4.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of upholding the building commissioner's finding, uh, building commissioner's determination?
I'm in favor.
Mark?
I'm in favor.
Denise?
In favor.
Herb, you're in favor? Paul?
I'm in favor.
And I'm also in favor. So the building commissioner's findings on zoning is upheld. All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Moving along, Appeal Number 2023-010, Arista Hyannis LLC has applied for a special permit in accordance with Section 24025B222 and 24025C10, drive-through for a proposed restaurant. The applicant proposes to remodel the former bank building and change the use to a food service establishment with a drive-through. Subject property is located at 715 Main Street, Hyannis Massachusetts, National Assessor's Map 249 as parcel 155. It's located in the Highway Business HB District. Joining on this will be all of our regular members, President, myself, Herb Bodensee, Paul Pinnard, Mark Hanson, and Aaron Webb. Attorney Cox, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, if I interrupt real quick, I'm sorry to, to, to jump in here, but I do want to disclose that I own a business at 644 West Main Street, similar fashion, a full-service restaurant. I have submitted a disclosure form to the town, so just want to make that be known. Thanks.
Good, thank you. Thank you very much and good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney with Nutter McLennan &amp; Fish and I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, which is Arista Hyannis LLC, which owns the subject property. Joining me this evening are Greg and Harry Batzavales. They are principals of Arista Hyannis LLC, the property owner. In addition, also joining me is Usama El-Sarahi and Terry Smiley and Josh Levine of Fashion Foods LLC, which is a franchise, a local franchise for Wendy's, which is the proposed tenant for the site. All of those entities, the Batzavales Brothers and the local franchise entity and their principals have deep roots here on Cape Cod. They are very involved in our community. This is a local franchise that is proposed to operate this Wendy's. And in fact, I know one of, there's a lot of letters that I know you have received, including referencing the high school. In fact, one of the principals is actually a graduate of Barnstable High School. So these are individuals who are very involved in our community. In addition, Randy Hart is here from VHB. He's the traffic engineer for the project. And Todd McDonald, who's the civil engineer from BSD Group, is also here this evening. I think probably the board is quite familiar with the site, but I, I wanted to orient you with this current slide. So this shows the subject property, 715 West Main Street, right here, just again, to sort of orient you to the picture. Here's West Main Street, the high school's over here, and here's Pine Street that wraps around the site. So the property contains about 19,500 square feet, roughly. It has frontage, as I mentioned, on both West Main Street and Pine Street. It is developed within about 3,120 square foot commercial structure that was last used by, as a bank, by Santander Bank. There are two drive-through stations that were used by the bank. You can see the drive-through canopy kind of to the back of the building, which I'm highlighting on the graphic to my left. There are three curb cuts that serve the site. There's one on West Main Street, which is very wide, full-access curb cut, so left in, left out, right in, right out, full access. There's a full-access curb cut on Pine Street and then there's an egress only on Pine Street as well. The existing site has 18 paved parking spaces. The impervious coverage is a little over 77%, so that's a pre-existing non-conforming condition to the requirements of the WP District. And as you'll hear, with the proposed changes, that figure will come down and is proposed to become more conforming. The site is within the Highway Business, the HB Zoning District, and the WP, the Wellhead Protection Overlay District. So briefly what's proposed, and then I'll show you some site plans and walk through it in more detail. But the applicants are seeking to remodel the existing building within the existing footprint, so no increase of square footage for the building to create a Wendy's restaurant. That use is allowed as a matter of right under the zoning bylaw. So we're not here seeking permission for a Wendy's or a fast food restaurant. That's allowed in the Highway Business District by right. In addition, as part of the proposal, the applicant is proposing to reconfigure and reuse the drive-through stations that exist right now for the Wendy's restaurant. And as I mentioned, currently with the prior bank use, there are two drive-through positions. With this proposal, it would be reduced to a single drive-through position. And as you'll see on the proposed plans, the existing canopy will be shortened with the single drive-through, proposed drive-through. Drive-throughs are conditionally allowed by special permit in the Highway Business Zoning District, and that is why we're here tonight, to talk about the drive-through and request the special permit. There are also some associated site improvements, which you'll see in just a minute on the site plan. No zoning relief is required for those site improvements. So before coming here this evening, this project has been going through the review process with, with the town departments and the Site Plan Review Committee. We initially filed for informal site plan review back in October of last year and concluded the informal site plan review process in March of this year, a six-month process, which, based on my experience, is a long time for, particularly for a project that has such little site changes other than the change of use. As you'll see when you saw the plans, and again, I'll show you them tonight, there's very few changes to the site itself. In addition, we've gone through one formal site plan review meeting that occurred on April 6. It was deemed approvable by the Formal Site Plan Review Committee and allowed us to, to be here tonight before you. And I, I do believe a copy of that approval letter has been uploaded to your files. In addition to the Site Plan Review Meetings, informal and formal, we've also had multiple meetings with town departments. We've had several meetings with the town's planning and development office. I was looking at our calendar, our initial meeting with that department was almost a year ago, back in May of 2022. And then during the course of the Site Plan Review Process, we've had multiple meetings and communications with the town's DPW and town engineering staff. Some of the things that we discussed during those meetings, both with the DPW, independent of site plan review, and during the site plan review process, was stormwater design, of site plan review, and during the site plan review process, was stormwater design, the transportation assessment, which I know you all have a copy of as well, that was reviewed by DPW and the Engineering Office during the site plan review process, the drive-up window queuing, which we'll discuss as well tonight, pavement markings, directional signage for the proposed drive-through slip lane, and crosswalk improvements. And we've reached a conceptual agreement on some new crosswalks that we'll show you tonight as well. So this is, I know we filed the proposed plan, and I'll pull that up. I wanted to share with you sort of the original plan that we initially filed with Site Plan Review. Changes, as you know from having seen the file and as you'll see on the next graphic, have been made to this plan as a result of those months of meeting with the informal site plan review and committee and with the two departments. So apologize, this graphic is a little bit hard to see, but here's the building. I think I'm just going to talk about the changes, because then I'll get to the proposed site plan, which talk about many of the site improvements. But essentially, here's where the proposed, the existing and proposed drive-through window are. And as you can see, this graphic shows proposed queuing coming off of that, that drive-through window. One of the comments that we received, and as you can see in the front here, the parking spaces exist now, initially, they were proposed to be angled parking spaces on both sides of the drive aisle coming back towards the drive-through window. During the course of the site plan review process, we heard strong comments from DPW staff and the planning staff, raising concerns about the queuing interfering, number of queue spaces and the queuing interfering with proposed parking spaces. And so while this was the plan that we initially filed with the Site Plan Review Committee, we took to heart those comments, asked our team to again, look at whether there is a better way to accommodate the proposed queue for the drive-through window on the site, and that came up with the plan that we've submitted and that was approved by the Formal Site Plan Review Committee, and that's the graphic that I'm showing on this, the screen now. So again, here's the building, and I'll walk you through this. Here's the building, just to orient you, here's the single proposed drive-through canopy and drive-through window. Hard to see on this graphic, but the existing drive-through extends out further, so we're actually proposing to reduce the, or sorry, increase the setback, reduce the size of the canopy and increase the setback from the abutting property to make it a more narrow canopy for the single drive-through window. In addition, for site improvements, we are making some significant changes to the existing very wide, full-access curb cut off of Route 28. What's proposed now with this plan is a single, narrow, right-out-only curb cut exiting the site onto Route 28. Where the very, the existing wide cross, curb cut exists now, we'll be extending the sidewalk, creating a crosswalk that it connects to the existing sidewalk on the other side of the site to make for a safe pedestrian connection across that, across the drive, the proposed driveway. In addition, the existing curb cut off of Pine Street will remain as a two-access, full-access curb. Cars coming into the site will enter through this Pine Street curb cut, and if they are coming in to use the drive-through, they'll come in, turn right into this new slip lane where cars can be queued. There's a stop bar that's proposed here so that cars won't block exiting the site onto West Main Street. They can then cross over, come back into, and queue in here into the drive-through. There's a bypass lane, so if a car does end up in the drive-through queue and wants to get out, it will be able to drive past the drive-through canopy and window and exit the site. This Pine Street curb cut is also existing and proposed to be an egress-only exiting So with, I would also mention that we are also adding some new plantings on the site, reducing the existing impervious coverage, going from about almost 78% down to about 74%. So there is a removement of pavement and addition of green space with the proposed condition. In terms of the zoning relief that we're requesting, as the Board may be aware, in 2018, the Town Council approved a very significant rewrite of the Highway Business Zoning District. So the current Highway Business District has a long list of by-right uses, including restaurants and food establishments, veterinary clinics, wholesale, retail, office, bank, multifamily. There's a long list now of uses that are allowed by right without any zoning relief. In addition, there is a section that has, allows for conditional uses, uses that are conditionally allowed by special permit from this Board, and that includes drive-through windows that support restaurants and food establishments. And again, that's the special permit relief that we're here for tonight, for the drive, proposed drive-through window. The standard of review that's set forth in the ordinance for conditional uses is up on the screen, but it is that the conditional use not substantially adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, or convenience of the community. Again, not substantially adversely affect those interests. When we commenced this process with the Site Plan Review Committee and in the conversations we had with Planning and Development, one of the, the topics that was raised early on was the need to prepare a transportation assessment to evaluate this proposal, which we've done, and it's a long document that's been submitted to this Board, again, has been reviewed by DPW and Engineering as well, and Randy's going to walk you through some of the highlights in just a moment. But I wanted to take a moment and just sort of focus in on the components of that analysis that pertain to the proposed drive-through window, which is the subject of your purview this evening. And so one of the things that the report does is it considers the trip generation impact of a drive-through window on a by-right fast-food restaurant. So in evaluating what that generation is, VHB turned to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the authority in determining trip generation of a proposal. And what the current latest ITE manual indicates is that in the morning peak hour, a drive-through window results in an increase of four trips as compared to a fast-food restaurant without a drive-through window. And that's really one of your calculuses in understanding the impact of a drive-through window. In the weekday evening peak hour, the ITE manual indicates that it's roughly the same with or without the drive-through window. So we submit that the ITE indicates that there is really almost no additional impact in terms of trip generation with the proposed drive-through window. Another thing that the report looks at, and Randy's going to talk about this in just a moment in more detail, is onsite queuing, storage, and circulation. We, VHB, went to two other Wendy's, one in Mashpee on Route 28, and the Wendy's in Hyannis on Route 132, and conducted real empirical observations at these much busier locations. They are on roadways, as you'll hear, that have significantly more vehicles than on West Main Street. And during these peak observations, peak-time observations, they determined that there were eight queued vehicles at a peak time. That's what they observed, eight queued vehicles was the maximum. What we are proposing with this configuration, and Randy has a graphic that shows the cars on the site proposed to be queued, the site can comfortably accommodate 11 queued vehicles. And so again, after looking at this real empirical data and observations that VHB conducted at other Wendy's at much busier locations, we're very comfortable that the proposed layout that's before the Board will accommodate the drive-through queue at this location during peak conditions. And what I'd like to do now is ask Randy to come up and provide some more detail on his findings that are outlined in his traffic assessment, and then I will wrap up with a few additional comments on zoning.
Well, good evening. I'm Randy Hart, I'm principal at VHB, and we prepared the traffic impact and access study for the project. What I'm going to do tonight is just walk you through various aspects of the work we did. I'm going to talk again about access existing and proposed and the circulation, because I think there's a couple more things I want to say about that. I'm going to talk in more detail about trip generation, talk through the drive-through operation, which is the reason we're here this evening, and then tell you about plans for some new pedestrian accommodation that we have been talking to Department of Public Works about. So I know Liza's mentioned this, but I think it's worth reinforcing. The site today has three points of access, one very wide, full-access curb cut on West Main, one full-access on Pine Street, and then an egress-only on the western portion of Pine Street. So at each of the full-access driveways that they allow today, left turns in, left turns out, right turns in, right turns out, so full movement under existing conditions with fairly wide curb, especially on West Main. Under the proposed, well, let me talk about the drive-through. Liza mentioned also that, you know, there's a drive-through, and I've highlighted it for you and shown you that there's not just one, but two points of position for the drive-through lane, as you can see on the plan. Under the alternative, we are going to lessen the width of the movement to West Main and require that it's a right turn only. It'll be designed to force that issue, so no lefts, no lefts in or out, and no right turns in. All access will be from Pine Street into the facility. As Liza's already mentioned, to get to, oh, excuse me, this thing's a little quicker than I am. To get into the drive-through, we will take a quick right to get in, and I've highlighted the path for the drive-through lane, as you can see. The bypass lane was mentioned already. We are also providing a parking space just to the south of the window, and that space would essentially be there to serve as, you know, waiting space. If somebody comes in, places a large order, more than normal, might take a little bit longer, we want that person to pull up, the food will be brought out to them, and they will not be impacting the efficiency of the drive-through operation at that time, so it's important to have that in place. Liza mentioned, I think as well, that we have a do-not-block box in this area. We want to make sure that this stays open and allows access for the egress right turn in that area, and I'm going to show you some signage that we're putting in place as well in just a minute. This graphic shows you how many vehicles can fit comfortably in the queue lane, and as we said, it's 11. You know, we're not using any of the area for the do-not-block box, we're not sitting on the crosswalk, but 11 fits. And while we don't think we need 11, it's nice to have the cushion of a few extra spaces. So one of the things we wanted to make very clear was, you know, where the drive-through is, and we want people to see it immediately. So we have a bunch of signs that would be placed right at the drive-through. You might probably even see it if you're coming in Pine Street either way, before you even enter the site. There is a drive-through, you know, directional signage here, there's a canopy marker here that, you know, basically double checks to see if a car is too tall to fit through the canopy in this area here. There's then a number of, and the menu board would be in this area, there is directional for the drive-through signs on each corner here, and as Liza said, a stop sign here as well. We also are providing stop signs on all of the egress movements from the driveways, as you might imagine. So in terms of fast-food restaurants, they are, as I think everyone knows, highly dependent on pass-by traffic. So the more volume that the roadway carries, the more activity the site usually sees. And as Eliza has said, we've looked at two of the closest Wendy facilities to this one. The first is in Mashpee along Route 28. Route 28 in that area carries approximately 26,500 vehicles per day. We also looked to the east, in the Route 132 location at the Airport Rotary, that location, 132, carries about 21,700 vehicles per day. In contrast, West Main Street, where we're proposing this facility, carries significantly less, 14,400. So the expectation would be that this location, you know, while I'm sure will have activity, it's probably not going to rise to the level of either the other two. So in terms of traffic trip generation, as Eliza said, we have utilized the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, the 11th edition, which is the latest and greatest. It's really the industry standard. Within the land use, the IT manual, we use Land Use Code 934, which is fast food with drive-through window, which makes sense. But the data in that category covers, you know, the various brands of fast food, including Chick-fil-A, and McDonald's, and Burger King, and we know that those types of uses are on the higher end of the spectrum from a trip generation perspective than a Wendy's, which is a few prongs lower. You know, so we think using that code is very conservative for that reason, and we wanted to try to prove that. So what we did was, we went out to the Wendy's and 132, which happens to be in the top 3% in sales for all Wendy's across the country, so it's an overachiever, if you will, for a facility. So doing counts at that location sort of made sense to us to further provide a conservative assessment. What the results of the driveway count show, and it shows in this chart, the column to the left is projections based on the ITE land use code. Column in the middle are the counts that we did at the 132 location. The column on the right shows what the differential is. And even at a Wendy's that's in the top 3% of all sales in the country, we're still showing that using the ITE projections is conservative. So it's, you know, the empirical study showed 150 almost less trips on a daily basis, 151 less trips during the morning peak hour, 15 less trips during the weekday midday peak hour, and then 60 less trips during the Saturday midday. So you can see, even at a, you know, overproducing facility, using IT is still a conservative approach to evaluate the project. We've been working with DPW. They've issued a couple letters, we've responded to both of them, but the one in March that came in, they did make a statement, which I think is worth noting, and that is that the DPW agrees that VHB performed accurate calculations and used the best management practices pertaining to the ITE trip generation calculation. So it's important that they, they agreed with the calculations and that were done correctly. As I said, we've used standard IT data, and it proved to be conservative. And we've heard a lot about the potential activity between the Wendy's and the Barnstable High School. And there's a couple things about that that I think I want to highlight for you, because I think they're both very important. First, that the interaction between the two would primarily happen during the morning student drop-off and the afternoon dismissal. During both those periods, typical activity at Wendy's is very low. They don't do much business in the morning for breakfast, and from 2:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, again, there's a drop in business between the lunch and the dinner crowd. And the, you know, the further part of that is that the people that would be going there, you know, if they're dropping their son at school and they want to give him a breakfast sandwich, doing it in the morning on the, on the way to school, right? And the same is true in the afternoon, if they need a snack on the way home, they're going to be there. But the people that utilize that from the school are already there. They're not coming there, they're, they're already there. So they're pass-by traffic essentially. So they're coming at low-peak periods, and they're already in the area. So I think that's an important distinction that needs to be made. The other fact is that during the peak summer season, when Wendy's is the busiest, as is all retail, you know, on Cape Cod, the high school's not in operation. So when Wendy's busiest, the school activity, school traffic will not be present. So the main reason we're here tonight is to talk about the queue, and that's the zoning relief that we need for the drive-through window. We've taken this topic very, very seriously, and we've gone out to, as I said, the Mashpee location and the 132 location, both of which carry substantially more traffic than, you know, the proposed location. And we wanted to understand the queues at that, those two locations so that we could be, feel comfortable about what we're proposing on West Main Street. So we went out to both facilities, and we did observations during three critical periods, on a weekday, during the lunch crush, during the evening crush, and then on Saturday, during the midday timeframe. And that's the three periods when the most activity occurs on these facilities. And the observations showed very clearly that the average queue is about four vehicles when you look at both facilities, and then the maximum queue that we observed was eight vehicles. And as we've already said, we're providing storage for 11, so we think we have more than, much more than we need, even looking at, you know, busier sites. Planning has suggested to us that we need 13, and we're curious to understand where the data for that comes from. We've asked them for it, they haven't provided. You know, I'd love to see it, but my guess is that it's probably from either Chick-fil-A or Dunkin' Donuts. I've done empirical studies for queues at Dunkin' Donuts in this area, and I've submitted to the town on several occasions for different projects that I've been working with, and that data is more in line with that 13-vehicle queue storage. The max we saw at a Dunkin' Donuts in the area was 12, so I think it's more in line. So I, I think the data might be from, you know, an alternative type of use, a coffee type of brand, and, you know, they really don't compare very well when you look at a coffee brand versus a Wendy's. They're just different apples and oranges, really. So in working with DPW and understanding the connection to the school and the need to provide a safe means of, you know, connection between Wendy's and the school, we've been working with DPW to figure out the best way to do that, and right, oop, sorry about that. Right now, we've come up with a conceptual plan to provide new crosswalk across Pine Street, a new crosswalk across West Main Street, and the crosswalk across West Main Street would have a rapid reflectorized flashing beacon, an RRFB. And if you don't know what that is, I've shown you a picture of it in the top left here. This one was recently installed in West Main Street. This one was recently installed in West Main Street, just to the east of us, near the Dollar Tree store. And it's essentially a signal of sorts that people walk up, they hit a button, lights start flashing, and it gives the presence that there's a pedestrian in the area and they have the right to cross. So it, it really improves safety from unlit crosswalks, if you will. There is currently a crosswalk to our west, down near the Dunkin' Donuts, but it doesn't have an RRFB. So not only will this RRFB, you know, serve access to Wendy's directly, but it'll also serve access to the Dunkin' Donuts from high school as well. So I think it's an important safety enhancement that can be helpful. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Eliza, and if there are any questions this evening, I'd be happy to try and respond to them. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Just a couple more slides that I want to go through. So in addition to the transportation-related aspects of the project, I wanted to hit on some other site and project considerations. First of all, I also wanted to include, and again, the quality of the graphic on the screen isn't great, but this is an excerpt from the town of Barnstable's GIS mapping system. Here's the subject property, here's West Main Street. It shows in blue the highway business zoning district that the property is in, and I just wanted to point this out. As you can see, it and all of the properties that it abuts along West Main Street are all within that same highway business zoning district. So it really shows you the extent of the district and the fact that this is all a commercially-zoned area. So these additional considerations that I've noted, first, again, we're reusing the location of the existing drive-through window. This really, where it's situated vis-à-vis the building, it helps to minimize visual impact associated with the window. In addition, for, if you've driven by the site, you may have noticed there is a well-maintained stockade fence that runs along the back of this property. That fence also has mature vegetation abutting it, which also helped to buffer the site from, again, the existing commercially-zoned property to the west of the site. As part of our conversations with DPW and Site Plan Review Committee, we have agreed to install some additional stormwater basins on the site, which will provide for improved stormwater management over what exists right now. One of the criteria that the board looks at is the convenience of the community. That's part of the conditional use special permit. We suggest that having a drive-through does enhance the customer convenience, particularly in this sort of post-COVID era that we're still living in. In addition, one of the purposes that the Town Council incorporated into the highway business zoning district when it expanded those allowed uses in 2018 was to encourage investment in this aging corridor. That will happen with this. You have a new use going in there. There are site improvements, crosswalk improvements, and other improvements that are proposed in connection with the re-tenancy. In addition, some renovations to the exterior of the building are proposed for the proposed use, just to sort of give it a bit of a facelift. As Randy mentioned, two new ADA-compliant pedestrian crosswalks are proposed, one at West Main Street and one at Pine Street. The project will increase the pervious coverage, or put another way, reduce some of the pavement on the site, and there are new plantings that are also proposed with the use. And significantly, as Randy mentioned, particularly along West Main Street, by taking that full-access, very-wide curb cut and changing it to a more narrow, controlled, right-exit-only is a safety enhancement that's associated with the project. In wrapping up, I wanted to just take a moment and walk through the comments that were included in your staff report, and I'll, I'll do this briefly. The first comment was that a special permit is required for the drive-through. We acknowledge and agree. That's what we filed for, and that's why we're here this evening. The second comment, and Randy has touched on this already, but related to concerns with vehicle stacking and that prior projects have shown a minimum of 13 spaces is required for demand. As Randy mentioned, we have requested on several occasions a copy of that study to support that comment that 13 queue spaces are required for demand. During one of the meetings that we had, it was suggested that it was, they thought it was from a Dunkin' Donuts study. Again, as Randy mentioned, this use is very different than a Dunkin' Donuts. He said apples to oranges. I would say apples to zucchini, completely different categories of use. And so what we've done to document that we have adequate queue storage is, again, taken real empirical data from much busier locations, which showed eight spaces during those peak observation periods, and incorporated onto this site 11 comfortable queuing spaces that do not conflict with the proposed onsite parking spaces. The next comment was that any encroachments within the town right-of-way would require a license from the town manager. We acknowledge that, and that would be sort of the next step in the permitting process. The fourth comment in the staff report made some comments regarding the scope of a transportation study and suggested that the board may request a peer review. We did provide a very detailed, thorough transportation assessment that includes that requested scope that was asked of us. As I mentioned, it has been reviewed by DPW and Engineering Department, and as a result of comments during that initial review, changes were made to the site plan. You saw the initial site plan, and you've obviously seen the proposed site plan, but that included redesigning the interior circulation, adding additional queuing, separating the queue spaces from the parking spaces, providing interior pedestrian connections from the sidewalk network into the site, and then crosswalks over the two roads that we mentioned. Again, you know, as you think through the transportation report and as you evaluate it, again, I think it's really important to remember what is before the board, what is under your purview as it relates to this request. It is not, for fast food in general, it is not a Wendy's going in the site. What's before this board is whether the proposed drive-through window substantially adversely affects the public health, safety, welfare, or convenience of the community. And as we have presented in the transportation analysis, the authority on trip generation indicates that there's virtually no additional trips associated with the drive-through window, and empirical, real data that we've collected confirms that the queue storage is sufficient for the proposed Wendy's use at this location. The next comment in your staff report was a concern that vehicles will skip the drive-through lane that's proposed when you come in off of Pine Street and turn right. We have provided, and Randy walked you through it, a comprehensive signage and pavement marking package as part of the site plan. This also was reviewed by DPW and the Engineering Department, and one of the communications in writing that we had with them was a letter from March 27th wherein they commented positively on the addition of the drive-through pickup window slip lane. Again, this is as the plans evolved. They commented positively on that change, as well as the do not block pavement markings and how we had incorporated that into the site plan as it, as cars exit out onto the right-out-only on West Main Street. And then finally, the last comment that was in the staff report related to the signage package, the site plan does show where the proposed order station and menu board will be located on the site. The actual menu sign and the building signage haven't been finalized yet, they're still in the design process. We have included though, which I think is, you know, really the relevant question for this board, the directional signage that's proposed within the site, particularly orienting towards the proposed drive-through. We understand, obviously, that there is a process for signage to be reviewed and approved in Barnstable, and so to the extent that that's not yet shown on the site plan because it's not developed, we will be required to go through that signage permitting process. So finally, wrapping up, I know there's some public comment that you'll consider. Many of it relates to the idea of a fast-food restaurant on this site, and, you know, with all due respect to this board, that's not the question that's before you. The legislative body in this town has already made the decision that fast-food restaurants and restaurants are allowed by right within the highway business zoning district. So what was, what is within your purview, as we've discussed, is the drive-through window, which is the conditionally-allowed special permit use. And based on the documentation we've provided, we contend that the drive-through window does not substantially adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, comfort, or convenience of the community. And I will pause at this point, and our whole team is here, should the board have any questions that we can answer for you.
Thank you, Attorney Cox. Does anyone have any specific questions for Attorney Cox at this point, before maybe we hear from, from Jim from Planning and Development?
I do. Go ahead.
Yeah, there's been no mention. I didn't see any, any of the material of hours of operation. And it came to mind that Wendy's is particularly enthusiastic about staying open late. And so I went on Google Maps, and I saw Wendy's that were open as late as 4:00 a.m. And you don't see that with McDonald's. Around here, McDonald's, I think, closes at, not a big McDonald's customer, about 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock.
I think that's the time by law. They have to close at 1:00.
So, yeah, good question.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to see them open until 1:00.
Not proposed. So the proposed hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. opening, I think that's right. 6:30 a.m. opening and 11:00 p.m. closing.
I think anything we can do to placate the, I had 32 emails. I'm sure there's, I'm surprised there aren't people in the audience here, really, but, you know, anything, 11 even seems a little late in a residential area like that, but I'm not the only one.
It is, it is a commercially-zoned area.
It is. It is. That's the reality. What was the other thing? I'll think of it.
I had two, just quick questions. What was the date of the traffic step, the, the collection of the empirical data?
Let Randy answer that.
It was not during school.
No.
It was, actually. Yeah, so we, we were brought on in September of 2022, and so we got the counts as quickly after that as we could. It ended up being the first week in October.
Okay. So did you make adjustments based on seasonal? I know you had, we don't have school in the summer, but we also have a large increase in population in the summer, so.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, the, the study does make adjustments to the traffic volumes, to the analysis.
To the traffic volumes, not to the empirical data.
So the empirical data, what we did was, we looked at some sales data between August and October to see what the differential was. And if we were to apply that, it would show that, you know, it might increase to about 10 or maybe even 11 vehicles. But as I said, you know, before, the two locations we looked at are much more highly-volume roadways, so the pass-by and draw is going to be greater. You know, for those reasons, we're comfortable with the number of queue spaces we have.
Okay.
Senator Dick? Yeah? I have a question on the, on the VPD. Is, was those traffic studies in both directions?
Yes, they were.
Okay. The other question I have is, during a normal shift, I don't know if that starts at 6:30 in the morning or noon, how many employees are there planned?
And where do they park?
Well, that's, I mean, that's, I mean, looking at the parking numbers here, eight employees.
Osama Sahrawi, I am the owner-operator, one of the partners of operating Wendy's in Cape Cod and Plymouth. And we normally have two people open the store at 6:30. They come in, and they operate the store till about 7:30, and we got two more. And a lot of our employees live around the area. They, either some of them walk, or they get ride by somebody, give them a ride, or they travel together. So we all, we end up with having maybe two cars or three cars, the manager pick up some employees as well.
So a maximum of four people?
Four people till about, probably about 10:00, and then we add another, about four more.
So eight people at, at peak time?
At peak time, we might have eight people, yes, but it doesn't mean eight cars.
And the only place for them to park is onsite in one of those 11 spaces?
Where?
Yeah, what's, what's proposed is eight employees, which requires four spaces by zoning. So four of the 11 spaces would be employee spaces.
So that leaves seven spaces for clients.
We don't have a lot of seating. We, we plan not to have three seats in the building.
Correct. Six seats. Was that driven based on parking? That was the decision there? Because there's, I'm moving the floor plan, there's a bit of space in there for people to come.
I have a lot of space, but we decided based on the parking, correct.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question in regards to that. So can you define what the seat number inside Mashpee and Hyannis would be?
Mashpee have 12 seats.
And what about Hyannis?
Hyannis have 70 seats.
70 seats?
Correct. And they're not full, they're not, have nobody there.
So the, the relationship between the two restaurants is quite different in that regard. That, that Hyannis, of course, is one of the busiest spots. I'm a frequent flyer.
Forty years in the bill, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, again, I get it. But it's a very different relationship. We can't use that, in my opinion personally, as a comparable to what we're looking at here. That's, that is, because, again, you, you, I don't see a relationship here really other than the name, but we're talking about two different business structures, right? People can go there, park, you provide the spaces adequate to fulfill the 70 seats you have. There's no option here for that option. So the only option really you're proposing is drive-through, correct?
Yeah, basically a drive-through. I see it as, this is a drive-through, not a restaurant. This is just a straight-up drive-through.
So again, I think the relationship, I, in my opinion, is, is just different, you know? Now Mashpee is similar, and yet Mashpee's brand-new. We still don't know necessarily, in my opinion, what Mashpee may or may not produce. I'm just, you know, this is my, these are my opinions, so.
Can I just weigh in on that? Greg Botzavales, Arista Hyannis, I'm a principal. My brother and I have owned a Hyannis store for over 35 years, while these gentlemen and their respective families have operated them. Fashion Food operates six Wendy's stores on Cape Cod and Hyannis. My brother and I own the Hyannis store and the Orleans store. I have 35 years in the commercial development business. I've done pharmacies, gas stations, doughnut shops, quick-service restaurants. I can tell you more about queuing and what volume the stores will do than Randy Hart, no offense to him. He can tell you about the trick generation, he can tell you anything he wants. This is what you need to keep in mind. Right now, the drive-through facilities are as much as 70% of the overall volume. Doesn't matter how many seats you have, that, those days are gone. COVID brought it to a head, and it's not going back. When you have McDonald's that's currently in the process of developing zero-seat prototypes, that tells you where life is going. What you have to keep in mind is, the empirical data is actual. It's taken on October 4th or October 15th or October 11th, whenever the case would be. But what we've done is compared that to the sales volumes, which are directly relational, okay, to the amount of business you do in the drive-through. Because if you do 70% of your drive-through volume of your sales, then that is your number, that is your real number. I will give you then in October, the sales of the, the empirical data for the drive-through queue was X. And when it's seasonally adjusted, it will go up by 25 or 30% or 40 people, 40%. So if you take the seven, the seven queues in Hyannis, for instance, and you want to up that by even 40%, you get 10 vehicles, okay? So you could say to me now that we are going to have a potential problem, we only have 11 queue spaces. There's one huge difference right now, and I could show you pictures, I could show you whatever you want. The prototype of Wendy's, which Hyannis is very close to, because as some of you remember, a few years ago, they did what's called the image activation, which is the modern-looking store, correct? My 16-year-old wants to go to that store. He doesn't care about the Cape Cod style and the architectural design or whatever. That is what Wendy's, Chick-fil-A, what everybody is designing to. There's a reason that McDonald's and Chick-fil-A and everybody else designs to that standard because that's what the consumer is interested today. What I'm telling you now about West Main Street is that it's going to be a very different animal. It's going to be a percentage of the sales volume of a store like Hyannis is in the top 3% of stores in the country, which is huge. So that's a top-volume killer store. West Main Street is non-pro-prototypical in design, in style, in site area, in parking, in queue, in seats, in floor plan, everything. West Main Street is going to be what I would call a satellite store. It's not expected, it will never do the volume of Hyannis or Mashpee. It is impossible. No one here that knows anything about fast food or traffic will tell you that it will ever do that. The traffic on West Main Street, as Randy had said, is 14,400, a big percentage unless The traffic on West Main Street, as Randy had said, is 14,400, a big percentage unless you are one of the 20% loyal customers of Wendy's that will get in your car and drive the 10 miles to go there. The other 80% are not loyal to Wendy's. They're loyal to whatever's convenient, fast, and whoever's got the biggest special on the Biggie fries or the, you know, five things for $5, which is ridiculous. We won't go there. So if you look at the traffic, that will give you the indication of West Main Street and the volume that it will do and what we expect. And with all the years of experience that we have, we're not going to try to open a store on West Main Street that is just operationally not going to work for more than one reason. Because it's not the right thing to do for the town, exasperate whatever issues are already there, and it's not going to work. It won't make money. If operationally it won't work, then it won't work. The other reason that West Main Street will work, without getting into much confidential proprietary details, is the West Main Street site that is an existing building on existing site with improvements economically costs X. If we were to try to identify a site on West Main Street or somewhere else in Hyannis that was one acre, have to do the site improvements, the drainage, everything up to specs, and build the building and equip it, it would be economically unfeasible. The business that you would get on West Main Street could not pay the rent, never mind make you a profit. So in totality, you have to look at the bigger picture. You can't just jump on one thing. You can't say the traffic. You can't say the queue is enough. I have a couple of plans, and I apologize for the screen is really not doing justice to the plans. And I would love to show you, I have one copy of each, but I would show you where we started with this proposal. And we had, you know, 12 queuing spaces, four of which conflicted with parking. We heard planning's concerns loud and clear. We went back to the drawing board. We eliminated the conflict to the current plan. If I may, I will just pass these to you. And just pass them around. But this will really give you much, much benefit of what we're dealing with. The other thing that is hard for us is we're coming on the heels of Dunkin' Donuts, and most of you sat on that hearing. I watched the hearing. I'm in the process of developing a Starbucks right now. I know the required queues. I know their volume. And I appreciate the board's concerns with the Dunkin' Donuts, because I have the plan right in front of me here somewhere in my pile. They had 12 queuing spaces, of which some of those spaces conflicted with parking, so you could always argue that they're not legitimate. And the biggest factor that you faced there was that the peak hours of operation of the Dunkin' Donuts were when school starts. And that was a legitimate concern, because the peak volume of a Dunkin' Donuts, as we all know, is in the morning. In this, you know, in the scope of a couple of hours, they do 90% of their volume. And we have the complete opposite here. You know, again, without disclosing anything, I would share with you anytime. But if I tell you the breakdown here of when we do our business, Hyannis, and I'll just give you percentages, okay, and we break up the day in day parts. So the morning, 6:30 to 10:30, we did 6% of our daily volume. That is a huge difference than a Dunkin' Donuts. Our day, our lunch day between 10:30 and 2:00 is 32% of our volume. Our day, 2:00 to 5:00, like Randy alluded to, is in those three hours, we do only 18% of our volume. So if you look at the hours when school is in or going to school and the hours when school gets out, we do a very small percentage of our business. That's not going to change. That's just the nature of the Wendy's animal and of that type of quick-service restaurant. So those things are good. And going one step further, the 5:00 to 8:00 is 19%, and the 8:00 to 10:00 is 12%. If you look at our business over the course of the day, you couldn't ask for a better spread. You don't have that period of one or two hours where you get hammered, you create the gridlock, both to the queue, both to surrounding traffic, and those adverse impacts. We do have empirical data from the Dunkin' Donuts that Randy had done previously, and those counts for the Kattuitt store, and I know that was a big subject of discussion at the Dunkin' Donuts hearing. Those were 12. There were 12 vehicles in the queue at Dunkin' Donuts, you know, in their peak hour. That's just not going to happen here. I want to alleviate the board of the queuing not being sufficient. And if you look at the plans that I handed to you, I think we've designed a very efficient queue to accommodate up to 11 vehicles. I can't see that we would ever be there. I think that if we go over seven or eight vehicles, which are very easily accommodated, it would be in a very brief snapshot of time. You know, sure, is there a 15-minute period in the course of a day, in one day in the summer, where there's going to be 11 vehicles or 12? It's very possible. But in the everyday operations, it's going to be very unusual. You will not have that. It's just like Liza said, apples and zucchinis. It's whatever you want to say. It's apples and 2x4s if you're trying to compare a 13-queue Dunkin' Donuts or whatever. And we don't know what planning was referring to. It was like a broken record from day one. On the first, on the first site plan review letter that we got, it said, "Advised applicant of concerns with inadequate number of vehicle stacking spaces in the drive-through. Prior projects have shown a minimum of 13 spaces is required to meet demand for fast food uses." Seven months later, in the staff report to you, it is the exact same verbiage, like it's being copied and pasted. I don't know if they were tone-deaf to everything we've done and everything we've told them and everything that we've put in front of you. So I don't really know where that comes from, to be honest with you.
Can I ask a question based on just what you've provided here? And for this design, how large are these cars? Like, I drive...the only reason I'm asking, I'm looking at the design here, and I'm just thinking, I drive one of the most common vehicles now that's on the road. I drive, you know, a quad cab truck. It's 19 feet long. I'm just curious.
That's a great point. And Todd McDonald here from BSE can answer that. But one of the first things we said to him when he was designing the queue and the drive-through was that we may have a lot of workers in vans that are going to use the drive-through. So we need you to design accordingly. You know, that's our demographic. Excuse me, I don't want to show, you know, the smart car, because that's not realistic for anyone. So we did design to what averages are larger than average. I'll let Todd answer.
Those vehicles are 18 feet on the plan.
Okay.
All right. Does anyone else have any specific questions? I think maybe we can hear from Jim from Planning Department, because they've put a lot of work into this, unless there's any other specific questions right now. Go ahead, Jim.
Good evening, everybody. Jim Cutford, Senior Planner, Planning and Development. I'll be brief. You guys are already kind of touching on the matter at hand. I mean, I appreciate that the applicant heard us. I don't believe they responded adequately, and that's why our comments were repetitive over the course of a year of working with them. We were looking at exactly what says right there. "Drive-through does not substantially adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, and comfort or convenience of the community." We were concerned about not only the queuing, but in order to achieve the queuing, the reduction in the interior accommodations, which to our concern is directly impacting the comfort and convenience of the community. Because now what we're doing is taking everyone at that high school at 2:00 when they get out, and we're all driving over to the Wendy's and queuing up, as opposed to if there was a discussion about opportunities for the folks in that community, the school and the residents in the area, to have an opportunity to walk and enjoy a fast-food establishment as typically done. Maybe the 13 wouldn't be the necessary number. But we believe that more than, or on target with what we've seen historically for, as the gentleman is correctly stating, something like a Dunkin' Donuts or others. I understand that a Dunkin' Donuts may have a larger queue typically. But again, we're not talking about a typical fast-food establishment. As Mr. Webb pointed out, this is apples and oranges with the Hyannis one. I also would like to point out, yes, DPW did do a thorough review. I sat in with them. They do agree that the IT data Mr. Hart always does adequately is to the standard of that of IT. But as you note today, this location is not your standard location. You are directly across from a high school, and that does create different peak times. It's actually creating four peak times now for this, for this, for this use. And so spreading that out throughout the entire day, again, was a concern for the convenience of the community. Instead of having the typical lunch rush and the typical evening rush, now we're having the race-before-we-get-to-school rush and the let's-all-get-out-at-the-same-time-at-2:00. So that, those were our two overarching concerns that we repeated over and over again. And we were, and we still are concerned about the tightness of this location. I do commend the applicant for reworking the site plan to try and accommodate our concerns. But we still, I can be a broken record, if you like to call me that, but I still stand by those comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, can you just quickly just give us a summary of, I know we've done this before, but requesting a peer review?
Absolutely.
You know what that means? We don't have, we don't even have a staff report in front of us, so it's whether we're going that way or going to a continuance, I think, tonight.
Sure. So absolutely. So if the board wishes to consider a peer review, we can certainly engage in those services. Working through the report that Mr. Hart provided this board, we could engage in a transportation peer review engineer to review Mr. Hart's analysis and then provide this board with some considerations, both of, you know, if the IT data is adequate. But DPW has provided you with some of that already. But some other considerations in terms of, in terms of potential improvements to safety. And again, for the comfort and convenience of the community, maybe some other opportunities that a second pair of eyes could provide some insight for this board's consideration in the future.
So if we decide to go that route, we should give specifics of what we would want reviewed? Or just basically around traffic?
I would recommend a peer review of the traffic study and provide comments and considerations for the drive-through at this location. And that staff would work to procure those services. We could certainly, before any services are executed, provide it to the applicant for their agreement.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Jim?
I guess I have a question. I did review the traffic data yesterday, and I'm having trouble with my computer, I guess. I can, I cannot really access it. But I did see that it was done in October, but I, my takeaway from it was that it didn't address school, you know, school bus traffic. So I could be wrong about that, but I didn't see that. And I 100% agree with you, four peak times. And, you know, short of closing the drive-up at school at 2:00, it's going to be, it's going to be crazy there. If you've, I don't, I don't think anybody here hasn't driven by the high school at 2:00. And you might as well add an extra half an hour into your drive. Unless you're going to Finney's Lane, then forget it. But, um...
Which isn't open.
Yeah.
So more to, yeah, more to your point, Herb, if you don't mind, real quick. I mean, it's, you know, the let-out time at 2:00 is such that, you know, every school bus leaves from that intersection across from Pine Street, right? Everybody's in agreement of that.
And the kids in their cars.
Of course. It is, it's just, you know, again, as a personal citizen in the Village of Centerville, I've been complaining about that intersection for 25 years, going back to when Joanne Bundtich was the Planning and Development Director, Elizabeth Jenkins, Pat Clark at the principal. I mean, you name it. We've gone over everybody. It is a traffic nightmare. So I understand that the 14,000 cars a day doesn't relate to the 25,000 on 132, but this is a completely different animal. That road is designed...how many, let me ask you a question real quick. How many drive-throughs are within a quarter-mile from your location on 132 and Hyannis?
Fisher Avenue?
I'm sorry?
The Wendy's in Yarmouth?
No, right on 132 and Hyannis. How many drive-throughs are in that quarter-mile vicinity from where your location is on 132 and Hyannis?
That's a total different, that's the retail corridor for Hyannis.
Of course it is. And there's a reason for that.
And because that's the retail corridor is why it does the business it does.
Of course.
But getting back to West Main Street, you're asking us to be penalized for current conditions that we did not create, which we're not going to exasperate.
Understood.
Our traffic stuff.
Well, again...
We have to understand that the traffic is more than the bank. The bank traffic...
Of course. It's just the usage. Again, I understand that's not necessarily our...
The use is allowed by law. We could open Wendy's tomorrow.
I agree. And I'm all for that.
The restaurant. I mean, I think we have to go back to the intent of the 2018 update of the HB zoning and why there's a restriction for drive-throughs there. There was an intent of council of why they put that restriction there, I think. And, you know, you watched the debate over the Starbucks and 132 that the council had. You know, I put that here with us now, too.
I was involved in, or I was here on the board when we had the Dunkin' Donuts review, the last Dunkin' Donuts review, which was just up the street from the high school. And my conclusion at the time was, you can do all the studies, the traffic studies you want to. Unless you do them, well, you have an entrance and an exit to a high school. They don't mean anything. And so, you know, and you can't, you don't know what the traffic's going to be and what patronage is going to be in this store. You don't know. I don't care how many other stores, unless you've got a store that's right at the entrance and exit and across the street from a high school, you don't know. And therefore, you're never going to know what the vehicle traffic is unless a vehicle study studies that specific thing. You don't know.
I think we were specific about that with the Dunkin' Donuts, right? We asked for the peer review.
Right.
And we asked them to look at that very specifically.
No, we never did a peer...
And I don't even, it's not even so much, again, it's the intersection of Pine Street and West Main Street, and the bend in the road there is such that the road is not built to support entering and exiting of a drive-through and an entrance within...what's the distance between those two curb cuts? 10 feet from the exit of the drive-through and the entrance into the parking lot? There's a space of land there that's, I know, yeah, it's probably 10, it might be 15. Let's give it even 20.
It's more than that.
Well, yeah. But it is, again, there, it's just, the road, again, I can't, gentlemen, again, I'm all for the business. I want to see the building in use. I truly, you know, there's no doubt. I just, you know, the drive-through in this particular instance, given, and why three seats? Why not just forget the seats?
Six seats.
Why, why, I mean, you...
That is not a restaurant.
Well, but I mean, but again, the, just curious, because again, the...
Hold on. But some of the comments that were made were about the high school. Everybody's going to get in their cars. Well, everybody's driving into high school? All these kids that are underage?
Of course not.
They're going to use, and we are substantially improving the safety of the existing conditions, which no one else has addressed, by eliminating the full curb cut and eliminating those left-hand turns, which are safer, especially for students, and by creating a pedestrian beacons walkway, which does not exist today.
This could...
At a high school, which is...
Easy, easy, easy.
This could be a magnet for the high school kids, cars or no cars, to walk across the street to get to Wendy's. Could be a magnet. So I don't care what signage it's got and what traffic.
Yeah, and we all know, I mean...
We're providing a safe way for them to get to the store.
Yeah, but what about the traffic that exists on the road already?
Well, then I think we have to ask, too, where are the people going? There's only six seats in the restaurant. So if all these kids are walking across the street to get lunch, and they're all walking...
Yeah, they're going to be jammed up inside.
They'll walk up to the drive-in.
You know, there's so many different factors. It would be impossible to say that. And you don't have to believe me about my 35 years of experience. But life has changed as we know it. With the number of seats, with mobile ordering, the town of Botchville has addressed that. We have parking spaces for the pickup. And, you know, these kids are going to order their stuff, and they're grabbing it, and I don't know what they're going to do. The old days of Starbucks and Wendy's creating fireplaces so people could hang around, those days are gone.
Yeah, but again, I understand your point. You don't know what they're going to do, but the rest of us have to deal with it, right? I mean, we have to...
But we're talking...
I know, I understand.
Do you realistically feel that more than, if we can prove that Hyannis does not have more than 11 cars ever in the queue, do you realistically feel that West Main Street is going to have that?
I think it's beyond just the queue. I think it's the traffic volume that a drive-through creates is what is... creates is what is, is what we're, our concern is, in that area with two ins, two outs. And so again, let's go back to here, we don't even have findings before us here. We haven't opened public comment.
Mr. Chair?
You know, it's gonna be a matter of if we're gonna go ahead, yeah.
Can I just interrupt and remind you that we have public comment?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was saying. Yeah, we haven't even opened public comment yet.
Right.
And what will be before us tonight is not gonna be findings, no matter what, it's gonna be whether we're going for a peer review or we're continuing to further discussion. So Attorney Cox, you wanna respond or are you ready for us to open public comment?
I, I, I would like to respond, why not? You can open.
Okay.
Then we can go from there.
All right. So we'll go ahead and open public comment. Counselor Atzlos, I see you. I don't see many other people from the public, but we do have some letters that we'll read in after.
I'm the public tonight. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time and your commitment to this board. I know it's been a long night already. So my name's Nick Atzlos, I'm the Precinct 4 Town Councilor, which is where this proposed drive-through is going to be. I'm here to express the nickel concerns by residents of Precinct 4, which I represent. As of tonight, you've received 31 letters opposing this project. Now, to Attorney Cox's comment that some of those letters refer to the restaurant, which we all know here is allowed by right, please understand, I actually speak to these people, many of these people directly, and in some cases they associate the special permit for the drive-through with the restaurant, but they do understand, for the most part, that this is about the special permit for the drive-through, okay? And so with that, along with the letters that you've received already, 31 as of tonight, one was also included from the superintendent of schools expressing concerns on behalf of the school district. All right, this location is poorly suited for a quick service restaurant drive-through. I know we've been talking about commercial locations on 132 and 28, but this is supremely unique, as you've all covered in a fair amount of detail tonight. It is directly abutted by a residential area. It's at the end of Pine Tree, which is a very well-traveled area by residents from that area, traveling eastbound from different parts of our town of Barnstable. I am confident that everybody sitting here on the dais is familiar with the area, possibly those, the applicant maybe is not as familiar because they don't travel on a regular basis like we all do. Also, we're talking about this intersection, which Mr. Webb has mentioned for 20 years it's been a challenge. Well, some of you may not know this, some of you may. DPW is already in the process of mitigation plans for that location, for that area. This project, many feel, would blunt any improvements that are made there because of the additional traffic caused by this, this potential drive-through, okay? The parking lot itself is completely different than what you have at the Wendy's and, by the airport and even Chick-fil-A, for example. They're much larger parking lots, they are more self-contained, so they can, they can handle more cars in queue. The concern here is, once that queue is full, where are these cars gonna go? They're gonna be on the end of Pine Street, there's, there's other roads across the way that residents are concerned that people are gonna park and wait to get in queue to get in the drive-through. Now, West Main Street may have a lower traffic count, as was mentioned, but again, it's completely different than Route 132 and areas of Route 28. Yes, it's commercially zoned, we understand that, but again, I think what's being left out of that conversation is the residential area that, that abuts it and the impact it will have there. So with that, those are my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Atzlos. All right, so I'll just note all the comments into the record. We received a public comment in opposition from Bailey Salgavick, a comment in opposition from a person last name Bram Hall, a person last name Brooke, a person with the last name Kenny, a person with the last name Carlisle, a person with the last name Casale, a person last name Brown, Dawes, Dr. Herrn, the superintendent of the schools, in opposition, written on letterhead from the Barnstable Schools. Public comment from Franz in opposition, Garrison in opposition, Granger in opposition, Kelly in opposition, L. Brown in opposition, Lindsay in opposition, Lynch in opposition, McCarty in opposition, Means in opposition, Mitchell, Mosley, Nichols, O'Neill, Parry, Pollock, Schwab, Schenk, Silk, Skinner, Smith, Stockdale, Strand, and Theo Hardest, all in opposition. And those letters are in the public file.
Wasn't there one in favor?
The first one I saw was in favor.
I...
As long as you mentioned it there.
You know who that was from?
Skinner.
Skinner. Is that in here? Oh, yes. Yes, public comment from Skinner in support. Okay. Are there any member, other members of the public here that wanna speak to this? All right. Seeing none, I, I mean, I think we probably should leave public comment open if we're not making findings tonight, so we'll just continue to leave public comment open. Trey Cox, you wanna respond to anything and then we can have some deliberation about how we're gonna move forward tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I, just responding to Mr. Atzlos, who just spoke, there were several comments he made about this directly abutting residential properties. To be clear, you saw the map, this actually abuts, it's part of, within the HB district, the abutting properties are also commercially zoned within the HB district. I know there are residences further down Pine Street, but just to be clear, this is a commercial zone and it abuts a commercial zone, it's squarely within it. I can put the map up if, if that's helpful to the board, I have the assessor's map.
But that, just to note, the abutting properties are being used for residential purposes currently.
Multi-family, correct? But again, within the highway business.
I just wanted them...
Yeah, within the highway business zone. The structures, you can see them on the, the graphic there, within the highway business. I think you see the point. You know, I mean, I think, you know, we have a traffic engineer who submitted a detailed study, again, based on actual observations. We feel very confident with that, given the, my client's experience with these restaurants all over this part of Massachusetts, on the Cape. They own several locations, as I mentioned, they own locations off Cape as well. It is obviously within our, his own interest, the applicant's interest, to create a site that functions well. As I mentioned, they are locally based here on Cape Cod, involved in the community and have taken great pride in the locations that exist in, on the Cape. And this would be, you know, another site that's important to them as well, that it functioned correctly and we feel very confident with the design that we've created, that it will do so. You know, again, we're happy to try and answer the board's questions, but, you know, we think this meets the criteria that's set out in the zoning bylaw and we've submitted professional expertise to support that.
Thank you. All right, so let's just, again, public comment's still open, we haven't closed that, so if we're gonna do any findings, Attorney Cox, do you, I mean, we don't even have findings. Staff has not prepared any findings for us?
Right, I see that.
So I think, I mean, again, I don't know what, what your feeling is in terms of if we want a peer review or not want a peer, peer review, is that something your client's comfortable with, if we decide we wanna go forward with that? Or are you guys looking for a vote if we're in a situation to approve this tonight or where are you sort of at with it?
I'll speak to that. I don't think we're opposed to a peer review because we're not afraid of one. We know that our data and all the work that Randy Hart has done will be proven out. I think those are the facts here. I think that a lot of the other things that were said and that were written and were sent, I think they're subjective. I think we all have feelings and opinions about a lot of things, but at, at the end of the day, when the rubber hits the road, it's gonna come down to the facts and those are the things that you are empowered to and obligated to rule on. I mean, it is, I totally understand, it's as sensitive as I admitted to you, especially the Dunkin' Donuts. I, I appreciate your concerns, I think they were valid, I think they are valid, but I think this is a very different situation and I think you have to listen to our, not only experience, but our experience of our traffic engineer that is reputable and whose firm does work for the town and the state and municipalities and government. These are reputable reports that are being offered to you and we're willing to go to the next step and have them verified and vetted by, by traffic, you know, peer review. We're also not afraid of the results and we're also not gonna go away like Dunkin' Donuts. So let's see if we can reach agreement on something that is reasonable and something that we can prove to you through peer review that works. I think that's our position, we're totally open to that.
Can I ask a question here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just real quick. So, I understand the data and I understand that sense of it. How do you take into account the actual, I'm not even gonna say it right, for people that drive that corridor every day, I'll include myself there, probably 10 times a day, it is how I access, and I'm into Centerville, way away from this, five minutes away, that is how I access everything I do in Hyannis. I typically, and this is only me personally, I can't speak for anybody else, I don't travel the other route because again, it usually has something going on with school, because when I go to work, kids go to school, when I go to lunch, kids go to lunch, when I come home and go to the Shaw's, which is where I shop and is probably the only major grocery store for everybody that lives that does not go to Marston's Mills, that's how I access it. And I come home in that same, so everybody's trying to access it. I can barely get out of Shaw's, it has nothing to do with this particular store, but just how does that get accounted for when the real world experience for the people that live in the area is difficult, to say best, when everybody is doing the same thing at the same time?
I'll give you the layman's practical answer and then Randy can give you the technical one. My question to you is, if you're on the road and you're going shopping wherever you, you're going, if you're going to the Wendy's, you're on the road already, you're part of the traffic count, you're gonna pull off, like you will to any other business, whether you're getting your cup of coffee or you're going shopping, you are passed by traffic. You technically aren't gonna exasperate or increase the number of vehicles on that road so that you make conditions worse. If you're driving from Ktuit, which I understand somebody there doesn't want this, then you're gonna add that vehicle, that traffic trip, onto the road. And if the vast majority of people were coming from somewhere else, then it would be hands down, we would exasperate or significantly adverse impact, safety, welfare, convenience, et cetera. But that's the practical answer.
So what happens when somebody comes on Pine Street and goes to turn left? Say you're going into Hyannis, you're heading east, you're on Pine Street and they wanna go into the restaurant and there's a line or there's something going there?
That already keeps you right now to go left there.
What happens then? You can't, because you're stopping a, a turn from West Main because it's right only, but from Pine, how does that, I'm just trying to see, that stops traffic?
Right, Mark, to your point, that's the back way to Ostervilles, Centerville.
Yeah.
It's the only way to get to Ostile from Hyannis is Pine Street.
And, and we did look at the intersection and, and as Mr. Cooker mentioned, there was a discussion somewhere along the process, we were halfway through our process when DPW said, you know, we're planning a traffic signal then, we were like, why didn't somebody tell us six months ago? It comes to find out that it's very conceptual, it's not even in the planning stage, I don't know if it's been funded or anything. We did look at the intersection and there are delays at the intersection, but we are not going to significantly adversely make those worse. And I know you don't wanna hear that when it's bad enough.
I could not agree, I could not disagree.
You're gonna drop people off of West Main Street on Pine Street, you're going to. There's no reason for them to, for people going down West Main to turn onto Pine Street right now if they're going to Hyannis until now there's a Wendy's and there's a reason to turn.
It doesn't work well with zero business there and, and it's not about having, you know, by right.
You also have the exit to West Main Street, so not all vehicles are going to Pine Street.
So I just wanna comment on this issue because, you know, there's something that's not being said and that is that, and first I just want you to know, I'm a full-time Cape resident, I drive this area all the time, I feel your pain, I do, as, as everybody does. But the, the obvious thing to me, and I think about the morning, right? For instance, we looked at traffic projections for a Wendy's in the morning without consideration of the high school present, okay? If we wanted to include the high school in the discussion, we would probably downgrade what we anticipate to be drawn from the Wendy's because not only would it be 50% pass-by activity during that period, it'd probably be almost 75 or 100, because no one in their right mind is gonna go out of their way to go to Wendy's at that hour because they know what's happening in that corridor. So, so why does that change at lunch?
How many turns, what's our turn number? What's our number of turns onto Pine Street right now and what's our proposed number of turns when there's a Wendy's there?
I could tell you, I mean, I can look it up for you while we're talking.
I get that the number of cars might be the same, but people going to high school are gonna be like, oh, let's pop into Wendy's.
Sure.
And grab, you know, our coffee or whatever.
Yep, and, and again, real quick, they will, they will dis, not pay attention to the exit and, only onto West Main, they will try to enter in on that road, right? Again, every left hand, every left-hand turn road, even on 132 into Whole Foods, gets abused by traffic, right? And that's just, that's, again, we can't control that and you can't either, I understand, but the reality is that will happen. This gentleman also mentioned that there is an exit onto West Main Street. There is not an exit onto West Main Street from the drive-through, correct?
Correct.
So you're not gonna, you're not gonna circle, you know, and that's, that, again, leads to this whole nightmare situation. Gentlemen, I, that, we don't need, in my opinion, we don't need a peer review at this point, I, I don't see...
I would like to add to the, you need a psychological study of the high school students is what you need.
It's very, it's just tricky, guys, it's just very tricky. It's a unique, I understand it's zoned, I understand it's permitted, I'm fully engaged in that, I get that, but it abuts a residential area in a poorly designed roadway that's currently constructed, that you're looking to add to the confusion of, that already pre-exists. It's pre-existing nightmare that you're, again, I'm not saying you're gonna make it worse, it's just, it is there.
Well, if we're not gonna make it worse...
But you will.
That's a different subject.
You will.
But, but if I follow your premise, that all the problems are created by the school, then let's take the schools and let's put them in the industrial zone.
Well, again, we, if we could, we would, right? The same thing...
What is the answer? You don't want the schools to have access to the businesses?
No, but it's the same thing with, I mean...
I, I think what you're hearing, at least from two of us here, maybe more, another traffic study, a peer review isn't gonna...
Well, that's why I was asking Attorney Cox, like, where she wants to go with this? Do you want, do...
I mean, I think this is a somewhat nuanced question relating to traffic and having the expert study, which we think will verify what we've submitted, makes sense. It's been suggested by your planning department and, you know, we, as Greg said, feel very confident with the work that Randy's done and I think we believe that a peer review is gonna come up with a similar conclusion.
I can answer that right, I can answer that right now. I think that'll change my mind, 'cause you can't do the right...
Yeah, but I appreciate anybody's, I don't doubt this gentleman's intelligence and his research, I truly don't. It's not what this is about. It's not about validating what he's telling us, it's about understanding the complexity of the location that is just, it is difficult. And I, again, I don't know, I don't know how else to put it, I, you know, I, I don't, I just don't think that validating what this gentleman's already told us is gonna change my particular stance on this particular and the impact and what, what is before us, which is, is it improved or is it more detrimental to the...
Welfare.
Welfare, safety.
Substantially adversely.
It is substantially detrimental to the safety, welfare and blah, 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 the rest of the...
Can I add more to that?
Attorney Cox, where do you wanna go with this?
I think Randy has a comment.
I just, I think this is worth putting out there and it's in the traffic studies, you may have seen it, but I didn't put it in my presentation. I just wanna be clear that, you know, what's out there today is a drive, banquet drive-through, we're proposing a fast food. The change in traffic between the two isn't all that significant. So in the morning peak hour, the bank actually generates 10 more trips than the Wendy's will.
That exists, that bank that was there before?
The bank that was there would generate 10 more trips.
That bank, no one went to that bank. That bank was dead, how many branches do they have in town?
Yeah, come on.
Like, there was a reason to turn out of business.
People go out of their way to go to that. During the weekday, midday, peak hour period, we would generate about 56 trips more than the bank, so that's our critical period.
But then you, I mean, again, you look at the Bank of America and they're queuing Again, you look at the Bank of America, and they're queuing out into, onto Barnstable Road, so how could you say, you know?
Facts are the facts, it's not, it's not, probably the parents.
Well, and that's the exact reason that the Bank of America is relocating to 132, because it's not working for them, it's not operational, it might be a double drive-through, it might be a triple drive-through, I'm not that familiar with it on 132 where they're building. So, I, these, but the, I appreciate your concerns and your opinions, but, you know, we have to stick to the factual data, and as a board, I think you should too, if we can verify it by peer review, fine, but if it is clear-cut and you're stating that it's not gonna change anybody's mind, then, you know, these are the things in life, how they are decided, by technical expertise, not by subjective opinions. Having said that, you guys can do whatever you want.
Trudy Cox, I think you've heard our concerns, if you feel that a peer review can satisfy those concerns and, and give us strong data on some of these things that we're really concerned about, and, and also I think it should incorporate that if there's a light there or if there's not a light there, if DPW is proposing a light there, we need to incorporate that into any, any traffic study and peer review, what's that gonna look like? How is that gonna affect the queuing, how's that gonna affect the circulation on the property?
How about this, could I confer with my client? Could we pause for five minutes?
I have one question.
You guys have been sitting for a little while, too.
I have a technical question. So I would agree that it's probably not gonna result in more trips, right?
Question, not opinion, please.
Okay, so I would agree, but my question is, you don't seem to be taking into account
Question, question. What's the question, please?
Forget the question.
Don't need opinions.
Forget the question.
All right, we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
It doesn't take into account that it's gonna be reconfigured.
Question, okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
It does.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
When's our dinner coming in?